Tracy said we're gonna get out of here by 7:00.
Oh, good, alright.
Everyone ready? Yeah, I'd like to call us to order for our presentations and I'll call on Coach Davy Gillum for our first resolution. David, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Again, my name is David Gillum. I'm the head football coach at Anderson County High School. I had the honor of coaching Matthew just a few years ago when he graduated in 2013. It was an honor to coaching. One of the best football players I've ever coached and one of the best workers. And not only are we proud of him for all he's accomplished in college, but he's really set a template for me and our program of what a kid can be, what somebody can be if they've just determined. And so going forward, we'll use Matthew as an example for all of our kids that, you know, nothing's untouchable if you're willing to put in the time and work. And that's really been his story. You know, even when he came to us, he'd come over Christmas and work with coaches on his breaks and things. And through his five years at East Tennessee State, he's still coming in on his breaks and working and it's really paid off. And I'd also like to say, as a former Buck myself from East Tennessee State, we're especially proud of Matthew and all he's done. So whereas in December of 2009, this commission honored a young Matthew Pike for his many athletic accomplishments while at Anderson County student, although we knew at that time Matt was a special football player, none of us realized that he was preceded to become one of the most prolific college football players to ever hail from our great county. And whereas Matt's tremendous accomplishments, both on and off the field, demonstrate his dedication, leadership, and commitment to excellence and will certainly bode well in his professional life and garner much attention from NFL scouts. And whereas Matt played his college football at East Tennessee State University and was an original member of the class that brought back Buccaneer football, his name will forever be etched in the history of ETSU football as one of the primary building blocks responsible for restoring the hollowed tradition of Buccaneer football. And whereas, as a four-year starting center for ETSU, Matt was recently named to the first team FCS All-American team for 2018, making him the first Buccaneer offensive lineman to achieve such an honor since 1969. In fact, this is Matt's second being named as an All-American. And whereas, he started all 45 games during his football career and played 98.8% of all offensive plays, missing only 35 offensive plays during his entire college career. The Bucks rushed for over 16,124 yards or 9.2 miles behind Matt's blocking skills. And he was on the field for each offensive touchdown except one during his incredible career. And whereas, he has also been selected to the first team All-Southern Conference team in 2018, a four-time SoCon Player of the Week, winner of the Jacobs Award for the Best Southern Conference Offensive lineman for 2018, and an anchor on the ETSU leadership team. He has been invited to three postseason All-Star Games, including the FCS Bowl in Daytona. Of all Matt's individual awards, he is most proud of his team accomplishments, including winning the 2018 Southern Conference Championship and making the FCS playoffs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in a regular session this 17th day of December 2018, that we honor Matt Pike for exemplary efforts and many awards while at ETSU, but most importantly, his commitment to excellence, his perseverance in leadership, and hard work are to be admired by all. We wish him well in his future endeavors and hope to see him play football on Sundays in the near future. Be it furthermore resolved that we declare December 31st, 2018, as Matt Pike Day in Anderson County in honor of his lifelong dedication to student athletics excellence. Speaking for all Anderson County citizens, we thank you, Matt Pike, for a job well done and no doubt you will forever be remembered by all.
Coach?
David, David.
Is that his dad out there?
Yes, sir.
Come on in here, you're allowed in here. We'd like to see, come on in.
Hey, and if I can add, the accomplishments this boy's made have a lot to do with his dad. He's got a good dad that's had him directed the right way since I've known him. And we're fortunate to have a hand in his future, but this man had him in the right direction a long time before we ever got the pleasure of working with him.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? Yes, salute. Mr. Pike, I watched you at that game at University of Tennessee. I'm embarrassed to say I didn't know you was from this area, but I found out rather quickly from the people I sat around that you were. And I was blown away by the way you played, your effort, your desire to win, to... I was, I told my son, whenever you do something in life, be like that, young man. And congratulations to the parents, Coach. You got a good one here and you are a prime example. You can do anything you set your mind to. And I enjoyed watching you that game more than I did watching University of Tennessee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You have anything you'd like to say?
The Lord's blessed me with the ability to play football and there's so much support in this county, you know, supporting my parents and my coaches I've had throughout the years. I'm just blessed to be from here, this is the place I always call home and just thankful. Thank all you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next presentation we have is from Mr. David Adler. He is Deputy Manager of the Department of Energy of Oak Ridge Office of Environmental Management, and I'll turn the floor over to him.
I was just gonna go quickly through some slides. If I mumble or go too fast or anybody wants clarification on a slide, please just let me know and we'll get back to it. Alright. Next slide, please. Pretty much everybody knows this part, but a quick overview in Oak Ridge, we've got everything that's in dark green is, was at one point a part of the Oak Ridge Reservation. You can see the city of Oak Ridge itself in the upper right-hand corner of the slide. And then we've got the three major plants, Y-12, ORNL, and then on the western edge of the reservation, we have what we now call the East Tennessee Technology Park. Most of us that have been around for a while think of it as K-25. A little bit louder. Excuse me? Oh, okay, okay. I'll get those in a minute. So the East Tennessee, we renamed it the East Tennessee Technology Park because that's a part of the reservation that we intend to completely clean up and hand back to the community for economic development and reuse purposes. We're pretty close to having that one done. We actually expect to be wrapping that job up substantively around 2020. All the buildings will be gone, most of the dirt that needs to be dug up will be dug up. There'll still be a little bit of work to be done, but we're really getting close to getting that one wrapped up. And we're already have about 20 small companies that come to the site. There's another fairly large company that's looking to move on to an area called Duck Island. So our vision of getting it cleaned up, handing it back to the community, using it to replace a lot of the jobs that were lost with the shutdown of the K-25 plant is beginning to happen, yes.
Excuse me just a minute, I want to get someone to close the door. We've got some distractions in the hallway. Thank you very much and I apologize.
No problem. Next slide, please. So there's been a little bit of confusion about what would go into the next landfill. So I wanted to spend a few minutes about that, but just to give some perspective on the big picture here, we've been operating one landfill for about 15 years and that landfill has been sufficient to allow us to clean up all of the K-25 site. We've moved about 2 million cubic yards of material from K-25 to a landfill. Actually, I'm sorry, could you go back to the prior slide? Let me just make this point while we... The current landfill is... This doesn't really show up on the screen there, it shows up on the... Okay, deal with that. If you see the Y-12 plant, go back to that, please. We'll get this down. Back one. Thank you. You see the Y-12 plant, and if you look just down valley, down Bear Creek Valley of the Y-12 plant, there's an area that's been deforested. You see one little light colored area, that's the current landfill. And it's connected to the East Tennessee Technology Park by a network of roads that allow us to transport all the material from demolition at K-25 to the current landfill without putting them on public highways. So we've got a good infrastructure in place to service the current landfill. We expect it to fill up in about 2020-ish, maybe a couple of years later, depending on how much money we get from Congress and how fast we get to clean up. So we need another landfill of about the same size to allow us to complete the cleanup in Oak Ridge, to fit all the material that will be generated by Oak Ridge, National Lab, and Y-12. I want to, I'll stress a few times that the landfill that we would use for onsite disposal won't be used for highly contaminated materials that we drain out of equipment or, you know, fuels that we remove or materials that are pumped out of tanks and such. That material all gets consolidated and shipped out west for the most part. What goes into this facility is the basically demolition rubble and soil generated by cleanup. Next slide, please. That was two, huh, there we go. Okay, so the first step when we go into cleaning up all these old buildings is to basically go in and do everything we can to remove all hazardous materials like asbestos material, all the mercury in the equipment. At Y-12 was drained out of the equipment. We remove all the light ballast and anything that has oils or hazardous materials are basically isolated from the building to make it more safe for us to do our work. That material is set aside. Next slide, please. Okay. The next part is the most dramatic part. We actually go in and tear down buildings with yellow iron. That generates large quantities of steel, you know, shingles, lumber, concrete, block, brick, et cetera. And that material is generally less contaminated, much, much less contaminated. It's not very different from the type of demolition debris you'd get from tearing down a Walmart or something like that. There are trace levels of residual contamination associated with it. I don't want to sugarcoat that, but it's generally fairly low-level contaminated material. Next slide, please. Then we dig up the dirt underneath the buildings. We've got to get the buildings out of the way so we can dig up the dirt under the buildings. And the dirt is again, generally not terribly contaminated. The types of things we see in the dirt are residues from spilled waste oils, solvents, cleaning fluids, things that type. But the uranium, at the Y-12, which is basically a uranium site, we get trace levels of uranium also. Next slide, please. So to wrap that little story up, basically highly contaminated material is isolated, shipped away. There's a medium class of material that we can ship to a set of existing landfills in Oak Ridge. And then the material that may have trace levels of contamination because of the site's industrial processing activity, we call low-level contaminated. That's what this new facility would be used for if built, and that's where we're working. We've been working actually for about six or seven years to get a decision on whether or not to build that second facility. Next slide, please. This isn't a new thing. As I showed you before, we've got an existing landfill that we built in about 2000. It's operated well for us. We've got groundwater monitoring wells around it and wells and sampling systems in the creeks and such that drain from the area. It's an above-grade facility. I think a lot of people think of these facilities, things where we dig down into the ground and then place waste. That is how it was done in the 40s and 50s and 60s, right up into the 80s actually, but the future is different. We basically build a fairly thoroughly engineered facility that's designed to completely contain the waste. We have a leachate collection system at the base of the facility so as rainfall filters down through waste, it can be collected and shipped away for treatment. We've got now 15 years or so of wastewater from the existing facility. The date on that wastewater shows that that wastewater itself has actually been very clean. Generally, it's all suitable for direct discharge, it meets drinking water standards. So it's, I think the evidence is that the, since the water that runs through this waste is directly accumulated and analyzed and it's coming up pretty clean, that tells you something about the nature of the waste that we're putting into the facility. Next slide, please. Not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but basically these are highly, if built, highly, highly engineered facilities. You have to have many, many layers of various earth and materials beneath the waste. You have to have systems in place to allow you to drain water from the facility. And then at the end of the operation, which could be 20 years after we open it, again, depending on funding levels and so forth, you put an impermeable cap over the top of the facility. The idea being that you basically dry up the waste inside the facility and isolate it forever from water and people and anything that might present a hazard. Next slide, please. This is a closer-up shot that gives you a better look at some of the sites that we've looked at. You can see the Y-12 plant to the east. There's one site just to the east of the current landfill. Current landfill again is that area that's got some exposed clay. And then you can see a black area. That is where we've already begun closing the existing facility from the eastern end. Those are geosynthetic membranes that are stretched out over the used-up part of the landfill to eliminate any rainfall from going into the existing part of the landfill. The area just to west of that is an area that's getting a temporary cover. And the area all the way to the west that looks kind of green, roughly rectangularly shaped, is the last cell that we have left to place waste into. Basically, everything on that slide in that general area that is light green or grassy is a former waste disposal area. Second site we're looking at, and it's the site that we've agreed to propose with the state and EPA, is the preferred location for a new facility, is that one called the Central Bear Creek Valley Site. It is out in the woods a little bit. The southern area of the site has already been deforested, the northern part has not. That, while DOE believes we can make all these sites work properly with proper engineering, the site in the middle is the preferred site with respect to hydrological considerations. There's less work that would have to be done to manage creeks and springs and subsurface water challenges. So that's where, basically just to the north of the Splatton Neutron Source, a little bit west of Y-12. Next slide, please. The aerial shot from a helicopter looking out over the whole area again, in the foreground, the existing site, the burial grounds I mentioned earlier, and then just a shot at the, where the preferred site for a future facility would be. It's basically way at the interior of the Oak Ridge Reservation. It's actually in Roan County, though the Anderson County line travels pretty close through there. I don't know if the current facility's in Anderson County or Roan County, but it's close. The Anderson County line runs through here somewhere, not far away. It's in Roan County, we've actually already interacted with the Roan County Commission a fair amount. They actually passed a resolution supporting the siting of a new facility because of their belief in how it's important to the success of the cleanup program. Keep going, please, next slide. There is the option of shipping this material offsite. There are commercial disposal facilities that exist out west, two in particular, one in Utah and one out west in Texas, and then there are other, we own some land, DOE owns land out in Nevada. And we are highly dependent upon the continued existence of those sites for the success of the cleanup program. All the highly contaminated materials, transuranic waste, spent nuclear fuels, the more highly contaminated stuff, we do ship out west. We obviously have to go through a lot of states to get there and we've got to, we've got to maintain ourselves in the good graces of quite a few governors to maintain that option. We want to do that. We've had some challenges in the past where we lost access to western disposal sites and it really messed up our program, basically shut down some projects for a while. So what we've been working on is what we think is kind of a balanced approach where we manage the materials that can be safely managed in Tennessee, in Tennessee, take the materials that really do warrant disposal in a high desert somewhere and getting that stuff out west. Now, if we were to elect to send all the waste, even this what I've been calling low-level waste, out west, you'd probably do it by train, that'd be the most cost-effective way to go. It'd probably require that we turn the East Tennessee Technology Park into a big shipping depot for this material. We'd run about 220,000 trucks of demolition debris and soil primarily to ETP where there's our closest railhead and then run it on trains out west. That's doable. It's not real consistent with the vision that people have had in the community for the East Tennessee Technology Park. They really have mostly wanted to focus on attracting new industry. Whether or not all that activity would discourage that or not, I guess is speculative, but there's not a high degree of interest at that site in turning it into kind of like the Grand Central Station for all these trucks. But it could be done. Our cost estimates run pretty much that if we take, our experience with the existing cell is that it costs us about $200 to $300 a cubic yard to put material into the existing cell. That's just based on the data we've got from the last 15 years. For purposes of our cost analysis, we said it would cost more than that for the new cell, 300 to 400. Our cost estimates for going offsite to the western disposal is about $400 to $500. We've looked at some contracts that are already in place with other sites who have gotten contracts with these western disposal commercial centers and who have contracts in place for very large volumes. And their contracts tend to run about $500 to $600 per cubic yard. So rough math strictly in dollars, and this isn't a decision that should be made strictly in dollars, we estimate about $800 million more to ship it all out west as opposed to just shipping the more highly contaminated material out west. There are other considerations independent of cost, like I mentioned, the political environment and trying to preserve receptivity on the western side of the country for the waste that we really need to get out there. There are transportation challenges that come with taking this material out. We can do it safely, but it's inherently more challenging and more safety challenges associated with taking 2 million cubic yards of material and trucking it a couple thousand miles out west. There's fuel and all that. The financial consequence is that in any given year, for the next 20 years, we'd have to spend a lot more money on basically truck drivers' fuel and tipping fees. So that is money that we don't have in our budgets to spend here on tearing down buildings and digging up dirt. So it would have the effect of running our schedule out longer. $800 million in terms of the big scheme of things for the cleanup program isn't huge, but it's huge in the near term. We have been doing well in the budget battles over the past few years. We compete with a lot of other DOE sites for cleanup funds and we've seen our funds go up from about $400, $450 million a year to about $650 million a year this year, just in the past few years. And we think it, of course, we have our biases, but we think it's because of Oak Ridge's success as a cleanup program. We've got this blended disposal option, we've got an excellent workforce, we've got good contractors, and we're getting it done. There aren't many places where DOE can point to an entire site being fully cleaned up and we're about to pull that off in Oak Ridge. So we think part of the success of the program has been, an important part of the success of the program has been the availability of low-cost, relatively low-cost onsite disposal. Next slide, please. I don't need to spend much time on this one. Basically, there are a lot of laws and rules that govern how we clean up waste and we have to comply with them. This facility, if built, would be used solely for Oak Ridge cleanup materials. No out-of-state waste, nothing like that. That's a big concern to people. It's not used to manage the waste from ongoing operations at the lab and Y-12. It's solely for cleanup work. And there are some other restrictions, we call them waste acceptance criteria, that say you can't put any liquids in the landfill, you can't have any mercury, that's basically elemental mercury, that all has to be isolated. None of these, the bottom rows, transuranic, high-level, or spent nuclear fuel waste. Next slide, please. So we've been working with EPA and T-DUC on this proposal for about six or seven years now. The process is not nearly finished. All we're doing right now is basically seeking input from the public on the fundamental concept of a balanced blended approach, if you will, versus all onsite or all offsite. And then if there is an onsite component, where onsite it should go. We began the formal public comment period a few months ago where the law requires that we allocate 30 days. We went ahead and originally allocated 45 days, knowing this was a topic of great interest to the community. The city of Oak Ridge then asked for an extension, so we granted 60 days. The commission asked for 90 days and we proposed granting 30 days. I want to stress that if the commission needs more time to get information, they will get all the information they request. And as a practical matter, DOE is very interested in what the commission has to say about this proposal. So even if the formal public comment period closes, we are going to and have to deal with any input that you guys might have on the project. The state and EPA are very interested in what the community has to say on this project. I'd say that they are, they've done their job up to this point of making sure that DOE does the appropriate analysis, does the appropriate site characterization. There is still some site characterization work taking place. They wait for that data before they make their final decision. I'd say their final decision will be based upon what the community thinks, what the data says, and what the laws say.
Mr. Adler?
Yes, sir.
We're about out of time. I'd like the commissioners to be able to last you some...
And I think I'm done too, so...
Yeah, I figured you was.
Yeah, I am.
But I wanted to give some time to the commissioners, ask questions.
Let's say I'm done.
I'll turn it over to whoever wants the floor. Any questions, Steve?
Well, I don't really have any questions because, you know, my background is I worked in waste management, emergency management, and I worked at all three of the plants. And I was on the site-specific advisory board for a number of years and got to look at these other places for this high-level stuff as being traced. I think the biggest, the biggest current people have is I think people really believe that it's high-level stuff or it's stuff from production or something, and it's none of that, okay? It's basically building rubble of buildings that have already been decontaminated. And I don't think people have an appreciation for the fact that that kind of rubble is very hard to certify as being totally uncontaminated, particularly with alpha emitters that only go through like a sheet of paper. It's very, very difficult to make sure you covered every single possible surface of a piece of building rubble to within an eighth of an inch. It's very, it's basically impossible to do that. And the only real solution for this stuff is to keep it at a well-designed storage site here locally. It'll be right up against Y-12 where it'll be part of its security boundary. I don't see the Y-12 security boundary going away for a long, long, long time. And it does, it does mean that you'll have, you'll have a little piece of land, like these little spots you've shown, that won't be built to use for general use in the future. But then again, I think they're going to be part of the security boundary. So I'm very comfortable with the plan in place, recognizing that you have alternate places over there because geology can play tricks on you. If you should have springs that suddenly appear places where you didn't expect them to be, it could make the place unusable. And you kind of mentioned that, but I don't think everybody caught it. Because these have to be places that can be maintained, dry, and can be sealed. And I personally have a long background and feel very comfortable with your plan and think you've done a good job.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, Chuck, Commissioner Fritz?
Just some of the comments that have been made on that we need another landfill because of mismanagement of the landfills and is that another, this is not really, I mean, I work at Y-12 and I can't say a whole lot, but I can divulge certain things is that basically what is going on here now is, you know, is no different than what was done at ETP. You know, it's the same material, same type of waste that everyone was gungho about and wanted because we were getting that site to maybe expand on and develop into future use and everything. So what's going on here is that we're tearing down so many buildings and after so many buildings are tore down, you're going to fill up a landfill and you're going to have to have more places to... to have more place to, as you continue to tear down buildings, you've got to have someplace to put it. And with all the old buildings and old structures and reducing the footprint and modernization and everything that's going on, you've got more and more buildings that are being tore down and cleanup that is being done and it's very, very similar to what has been done at ETTP. So as Commissioner Mees already said, nothing extremely hazardous is going into these landfills and is all being properly containerized, packaged and shipped to the proper storage facilities.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner White.
Did you have something, sir? Go ahead.
At this point, what would have to change before we would, before Oak Ridge, before this project would accept out of state waste?
It will probably be written into something called the Record Decision, which is the final decision that the head of Oak Ridge signs and the high level folk, if not the commissioner signs, the state of Tennessee and EPA. So that will be built in as an enforceable requirement. You'd have to undo that decision. So it'd be a very unlikely thing to make it suitable for, to make it legally available for out of state waste.
One other question. Down here at the bottom, you got, you got a word here I don't understand what it is.
Transuranic.
Transuranic or something.
That's, that's waste that has more than a certain concentration of radionuclides that are non-naturally occurring radionuclides, radionuclides that are heavier than uranium. Yeah. Sorry. It's bad stuff. It's the stuff you want to go out to, it's the stuff you want to go out to salt mines in New Mexico.
Okay, Commissioner Waddell and then Commissioner Smallridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, thank you for coming, Mr. Adler. Appreciate you giving us information, giving us overview. I've been out to those salt mines out there in Carlsbad with the transuranic waste wind. Commissioner White, I didn't know what it was either until I started going to ECA meetings, learned a lot about it, went out to Yucca Mountain and watched that and learned a lot myself. And I guess the only thing I wanted to say as part of one commissioner of 16 for Anderson County is that, Mr. Adler, we feel like that Anderson County, city of Oak Ridge and Roan County have been working very well together and we feel it's very important that our Mayor Frank, Mayor Gooch and Executive Woody drive the bus on this. And we don't want to interfere in any way, but we are going to lean on our friends in Oak Ridge to give us direction. And again, appreciate you coming, giving us this information. It gives us what we need to be informed and I don't think you're trying to hide anything and I appreciate that for sure. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Yes, I appreciate the presentation also.
Thank you.
We've heard from some pretty professional people that have concerns. I'm sure you've heard some of these same concerns. I'd appreciate, you know, your opinion and why, what are, where are these people mistaken or what is the problem that they see?
I've always said you never, you never find many people who say, "Give me a landfill," right? I mean, it's not a popular proposition. So there are certainly some people who would rather not have a second landfill. People have concerns that it might somehow discourage job growth in Oak Ridge or impact property values. Our response has always been, we don't, we don't see that based on all the research we've done. We think that the success in this area is in part promoted by getting Oak Ridge cleaned up. So people are talking about all the wonderful resources we have to enjoy in the Oak Ridge area, not about contaminated facilities. Also, part of the economic success and driving up home prices and all that good stuff is having lots of good jobs in Oak Ridge. So the cleanup program is one source of jobs, but another is the missions. So if we clear out real estate for them to build new facilities, we think that's good too. The other thing that people raise is, will this be a safe facility forever? Because that's, that's a fair question. That's an absolute requirement. Our response to that is, we have to make it safe forever. We have to make it safe forever. That's our legal obligation. So hopefully with all our good engineers and all the good oversight we get from the state and EPA, that is the outcome. But that's a, that's a bedrock requirement that the facility be safe. So there's a natural opposition to all new landfills, but there are a fair number of people who've also commented that they're interested in the success of the cleanup program. We think this is key to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waddell. I know it's on your clock right now, but I have a question myself. You allow me? Right, okay. And Mr. Adler, the, I've spent my first five years at Y-12 in Alpha 5 and I remember the contamination of mercury in that building. And I don't think we addressed that in your presentation. Could you?
Yes.
Tell us what's going to happen when we take down Y, Alpha 5, 9201-5, 9201-4 and Beta 4.
Right.
When those buildings are coming down, what's going to happen with that debris?
We refer to that entire area as the West End Mercury Area because those buildings and the soils and drain lines beneath those buildings have mercury challenges. Our objective is to do everything that is practical to get that mercury isolated so that it actually initially goes into storage back in Alpha 5. That won't work for long because we've got to tear down Alpha 5 too, but it goes into storage as we find an offsite disposal location for it. There are limits to what we can practically do. The concrete block that makes up some of those buildings has had some mercury permeate into it. We're looking at ways of grinding it and shaking it and heating it up and doing all kinds of things to further push that mercury out. But at the end of the day, there will be some mercury that will need to end up in the cell. There are actually laws and regulations that govern mercury disposal and we have to comply with them. If the mercury is above a certain level, we have to basically solidify it and immobilize it with chemical fixatives and so forth. So I guess the quick answer is we're going to do everything we can to drain the equipment, shake all the mercury out of it, collect all the pooled mercury we can find. There will be some quantity that remains in the material that we put in this facility and it will be put there in a way that's compliant with regulations that exist for the disposal of mercury so that we don't have any release from the facility that's any significant, environmental significant.
Yeah, that was my main concern.
Okay, okay. Thanks for asking about it.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Commissioner Waddell. And if there's someone in the audience that wishes to speak on this subject under citizens, appearances, citizens, you'll be able to speak there for three minutes if, if it's not on, your issue is not on the agenda. Robert, do you have a question?
I'll be one of those if I'm permitted.
Yeah, you want to be under appearance for citizens?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does the commission want to press on or do you want to take a quick break? Okay, let's do it. Oh, well, yeah, we got, let's take about just five minutes so we can get our clickers. We haven't got our clickers delivered yet. Brian's got us all charged up, so let's take, take a five minute break. We'll get right back at it and we'll come into it.
Hi.
I know this is a little bit weird, but I realize I, the senior center that the county's been looking into, I think I've been looking into.
Yeah.[1110.13]
We got prayer, though. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
You look for me.
Dude, I enjoyed watching you play. No, that was good. No, that was great. That was good.
All right, let's call the Anderson County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order Monday, December 17, 2018. If you all go register, get this up and running here. Brian's got us all charged up. Six, 14 present.
I can't figure out how to do it.
White's present. Yes, sir. Okay, two absent, 14 presents. Next, we'd like to go to prayer. Prayer will be led by our EMS Director Nathan Sweet, and then our pledge will be led by Commissioner Anderson.
Let us pray. God, I just want to start out by saying thank you. Thank you for today. Thank you for the blessings upon us, upon our family. Thank you for the blessings upon our county. Thank you that you're a God who is love, and your love never changes. And God, I ask that I come before you right now humbly, just ask that you would bestow your blessings upon Anderson County. Your scripture says it calls us to be a light, like a city set on a hill. And every time I think about that, I think of these large cities, that before you ever can make out the buildings, you see the light from those buildings lighting up the sky. And God, I just pray that Anderson County would be the same way, that when people would come to Anderson County, it would light up like that, but not because of man-made lights, but because of your love, your love being reflected in us and through us, that we would be that city set on a hill, that we would be that light. And God, as we prepare for Christmas coming up, as we remember the miracle of your son coming down from heaven to be born to a virgin, so many years ago, God, you bestowed a gift upon us, the greatest gift of all. There's no greater gift. And for those of us that have received that gift, God, you give a gift for somebody to receive it, to somebody to accept it. And for those of us who have accepted and received that gift, that you would make us mindful that we're not receiving gifts anymore, but we're being called by you to give gifts. In this time, that there are so many families, there are so many people that are without, that you would help us to be mindful, that we're to be givers, help us to be mindful of the gift that you gave us, and in turn, we're to give that gift. So thank you for Christmas. Thank you for all the things that that means to us. And I just, I ask for a blessing upon our commissioners, I ask for a blessing upon our elected officials, our county servants, God, that you would just bless them, not just this season, but every season. You provide for them above and beyond, in areas that they didn't even know that they needed. And I ask this all in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sweet. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Next is appearance of citizens. If you, anyone here would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, please approach the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to talk. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Mondale. My name is Robert Kennedy. I reside at 209 Whippa Will Drive in Oak Ridge. I've appeared before this body before. I'm a registered professional engineer in Tennessee. I am by no means an anti-nuke. I designed the transplutonium production rods and the advanced neutron source 25 years ago, and I designed robotic risks to be used in nuclear fuel reprocessing. So I've been around. One of your commissioners, the last week, spoke about the difficulty of having a pile of rad, you know, just a pile of stuff and being able to characterize it. But I would reject that model. Technology can solve a great deal of this problem. Instead of having a heap of stuff, set it out into a thin sheet, and have a lot of sensors over it, you could solve it with automation. But radiology isn't the problem here. You know, radiologic elements, they announce themselves, they send out radiation, you know what they are. The problem is mercury. That's the real problem. That's what the city of Oak Ridge does not want in city limits. And that stuff cannot go into a hole in the ground anywhere in Oak Ridge. It's all, the mercury has all got to go out west because, unlike radiologic, radioisotopes, mercury has no half-life. It's going to be as deadly a billion years from now as it is right now. So the problem is mercury. Don't lose sight of that. That's what the city of Oak Ridge does not want anymore within its city limits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Anyone else like to approach the commission? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca Bowman. I live at 214 Whippa Will Drive in Oak Ridge, Tennessee. And I've been following this waste dump project for the past year. And tonight is the very first night I've heard the DOE state clearly that mercury will be in this landfill. That's very concerning, very concerning for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, sir. You'll be next, ma'am. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Martin McBride, 954 West Outer Drive in Oak Ridge. I spoke to you at your last meeting, and I want to thank you for requesting some extra time in the comment period. I think that was great leadership on your part. And really, what I am personally after is to see if we can try to get DOE to stop taking the support of Oak Ridge, Roan County, and Anderson County for granted. I don't think that's particularly healthy for the Department of Energy's nuclear programs, and I don't think it's healthy for us. You'll notice on that map that David showed, all the waste sites that he's talking about are out in the deep west. There used to be waste sites on the east coast. Now, what do you think's going to happen if some of those waste sites close out west? We're going to be sitting here as one of the few sites that still allows waste, storage, and burial. Now, that, David said it's a big deal to change and allow outside waste to come in. Yeah, it is. I ran one of DOE's major waste programs, or cleanup programs. It is. And I personally would love to see the waste here in Oak Ridge. But I don't think it's a good idea for them to take us for granted. And right now, they're taking the economy, the schools, the homeowners and businesses for granted in a way that the nuclear power plants, an industry I came from, never did. A major nuclear power plant did not assume that they'd be able to store indefinitely waste on their site. Their agreement with the host communities was, all of that waste goes someplace else. DOE from the beginning has assumed it could store it here. And I'd say, fine, but let's talk economics. Anderson County, Roan County schools, I think, are being held back funding. Our taxes are higher than they should be because people don't want to locate in areas that have a waste site. And believe me, our competitors make sure that they know that we have one right here. So I say let's have some economic balance. DOE can do wonderful things. I saw it as a manager when it wants to. Taking you for granted is not a healthy thing for the people of Anderson County, for the schools, or for the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am, I apologize. Come on up, state your name and your address, please.
Thank you. My name is Virginia Dale. I live at 1314 George Lovelace Lane in Knoxville. I've lived in Anderson County for 26 years. My roots in Tennessee go back to the 1700s. I care about Tennessee. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Advocates for the Oak Ridge Reservation, an organization that was formed about 20 years ago. We represent the citizens. I have a PhD in ecology and can speak from that experience. We are very concerned about this landfill and would not like it to be established here in the Oak Ridge area. Our preferred sites, DOE's preferred sites would add to the inventory of contaminated sites that are already here. They are proposed to be put in greenfields. They disavow some of the rules under which Circler was established. The western sites that are hydrologically suited, that are away from established populations, are asking for waste to be delivered there. And it would provide jobs in Tennessee to put the waste on trains and deliver them there where communities are asking for them here. Tennessee does not want to be trashed any further than it is. When I was selling my home in Oak Ridge, I had buyers ask, now, what about this waste that are here? And I provided them with websites and information, but I did not bring up that a new landfill is being proposed. That couple ended up moving to Crossville and bought a home there. We love all areas of Tennessee and would really like you to think about jobs in Tennessee that would move this material to western sites where it's more suited. I have formal comments that our group delivered to Mr. Japp, and I'd be glad to show them to you.
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much, Virginia.
Thank you, Virginia.
Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. My name's Amy Fitzgerald, and I'm the Government Affairs Director for the City of Oak Ridge. And I wanted to just give you a quick update on where the city is in evaluating and looking at this project. We did, last Monday night, city council unanimously adopted a resolution transmitting a number of comments and questions to the Department of Energy about this project. And I want you all to know that we have been studying this since 2015, when the issue first arose. And I know, when I first came to work for the city a number of years ago, the existing landfill was being considered, and I think Dave's left, but I remember Dave and I being at the public hearing together, talking about the first landfill. And they thought, Department of Energy thought, that it would suffice, and it would take care of all the waste that they needed to have for the disposal capacity. So we recognize that they've got a problem, and I think everybody understands that we want to help solve the problem. One of the things that we have talked about is, you know, the mercury issue. The Roan County, the resolution that Roan County adopted has a clause in there that says no elemental mercury will be disposed of in the landfill. But there's many different types of mercury, and the type of mercury that is in these buildings is not, for the most part, elemental mercury. So that is, DOE has issued a separate proposal in July of this year, and is seeking someplace to store the elemental mercury. But there's, like I said, the type of mercury that would likely go in the landfill, you know, is going to be there forever. So as our city council and our city manager said, this is a 200-year decision, it's going to be there in perpetuity. I think I've provided Commissioner Creasy and the Oak Ridge Commissioners, many of whom were at our two-hour work session several weeks ago on this topic. So we have submitted a number of comments and questions to DOE over the last few years. We haven't gotten responses to the questions that we asked in July on the topic. We've asked for written responses on that. The waste acceptance criteria, every landfill across the country that's been successful for DOE has had those waste acceptance criteria defined before the landfill is built. And they want to finalize that after the record of decision is made. That record of decision is the contract that's going to be in place between DOE, EPA, and the State of Tennessee. If they don't develop those technical requirements before that record of decision is signed, you'll never be able to open that back up. So I know we don't have a lot of time here, but I encourage you to please take a look at the materials. We've had several technical reports prepared. We've had the fortune of having experts in our community and our environmental quality advisory board. So we want to make sure that this 200-year decision, the community understands what all the costs and benefits are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else like to speak on any issues? Yes, sir. State your name and your address, please.
Todd Waterman from 418 Orchard Knob Road in Clinton. David Adler's job is to sell this plan. But those scientists most qualified to understand it are those most opposed to it. Most of them are retirees, and they're interested only in the public good. They're the best of the best, and I think we should listen to them. You've seen comments from a bunch of them have been distributed to you, and you heard from some of them tonight, too. Attorney, Sierra Club attorney Brian Paddock says this proposal couldn't get a permit for a normal landfill, let alone one for radionuclides, narcotics, and mercury-contaminated waste, without all kinds of superfund exemptions and waivers. And that earthquake we just had was on a fault that runs right past the MDF. And you can't have a hazardous waste facility within 200 feet of an active fault. Retired DOE scientist Axel Ringy says the quake could easily crack the liner, which would be good only for about 30 years in any case. Oak Ridge and DOE have made very important contributions to our nation, our national security, and to the world. But the legacy of that is that we have a lot of contamination, and we have a reputation for contamination, which is scaring off businesses and depressing property values. The only way we're going to get rid of that contamination is by getting rid of, the only way we're going to get rid of that reputation for contamination is by getting rid of the contamination itself. And we have a very good way to do that, which is to ship it out west where it can be very safely stored. David Adler explained to me that the DOE wants to do this the cheapest, short-term way because they have a yearly budget. So they need to think short-term. But we're going to be stuck with forever, and forever is plenty of time for lots of things to go wrong, and believe me, they will. And these scientists are trying really hard to tell us that. So I think this stuff needs to be shipped out west where it can be very safely stored. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks like to speak before a commission on any subjects that aren't on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to get a feel from my fellow commissioners. I'm thinking that we may need a public hearing or a workshop where we can hear from our constituents. And I just want to know if we've heard enough for us to take a position, or do we want to listen to our constituents further? So I'd like to kind of get a feel. Would make a motion that we have a public hearing, invite the public to come and speak to us, give us their opinions? Or do you think we have enough information already supplied to us for us to take a position and come up with a resolution supporting Roan County, Anderson County, and Oak Ridge is what I would like to see us do? So that's my thought on it, and I'd like to hear from the rest of you and see how you feel about it, and whether we should have a public hearing or not.
Good comments, Commissioner Creasy. I'd like to also, before we reach out to the commission, ask the mayor what her thoughts are on your suggestion and your idea, and she may have some other information to add to this. Do you have any thoughts, Mayor, you'd like to share with us before we get into discussing this? It's not really on the agenda, so we're still talking under appearance of citizen at this time, but go ahead, Mayor.
I think it's always worthwhile to hear from the public and to give them an opportunity. And I'm happy to work with anyone on, Commissioner, you, Mr. Chairman, to set up some type of meeting. I know this issue is very important to me, and I've actually, in my own comments over the years as I have studied this issue, made sure to bring the mercury issue to, I guess, to the attention of DOE when we've been given opportunities to have public comment in their workshops. My concern, and I know I've shared this in an email with some of the commissioners, is we currently have these legacy materials out in the open in our community on a daily basis. And so I would like to see a resolution sooner rather than later, as we have had these contaminants in our community for that long. And what I see is an ongoing problem, is a failure to reach a consensus on how we are going to get the cleanup done once and for all. And I think that lends itself to a negative impression mark to our community. So I think having some type of opportunity, I'm happy to help you all set that up or be the boots on the ground for that, if you like.
Commissioner Creasy, would you like for the mayor to, and yourself, to...
Well, yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion that, and I looked at my calendar, and it looks like with the holidays and that sort of thing, and a 10-day public notification, it looked like January the 3rd may be a good day that we could have a public hearing. And so it can be, if no one wants January the 3rd, we can amend the motion if I make it, or if I get a second. So I'll make a motion, we have a public hearing on January the 3rd.
If you could, let's just hold off, let's go ahead and close the appearance of citizens.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. Let's go ahead and go into the approval and correction of agendas, and that would be appropriate place to go ahead and add. We'll add it to the agenda. It's going to take two-thirds vote of this body to put it on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Mr. Parliamentarian? So let's move on. No other citizens like to talk on other any issues? We're going to move on to item four on the approval and correction of agendas. First item is the consent agenda. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Get recommendation for a correction on the consent agenda. Part four actually needs to be deleted because it's all covered as part seven, eight, and nine of the regular agenda. And then the committee reports now part five would be renumbered part four.
You'd like to make that change?
Yes.
We have a motion to make that change. I guess it'd be an amendment to the original motion. Have a second to the amendment. Any discussion on the amended motion? All in favor of the amendment, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll vote on the original motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Next item, regular agenda. And commissioners, what I'd like to try to do tonight, I said last meeting I was going to try this sometime down the road, but when we have a motion to make, let's try to use the keypad to make a motion. However, I will suggest, do not second it until we hear what the motion is. That's the problem where I got kind of confused, because for me, it's hard to understand how we can second a motion when we don't know what the motion is. So let's try to use the board tonight to make the motion. I'm going to try real hard to pay attention to the board. I'm going to lean on my vice chair and my parliamentarian to hit me with a hammer if I don't notice it, and then we'll proceed on and see if we can make that work, and that way it could tie in. So next item is going to be the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to prove as is, or add any additional items? the keypad to make a motion. However, I will suggest do not second it until we hear what the motion is. That's the problem where I got kind of confused, because for me, it's hard to understand how we can second a motion when we don't know what the motion is. So let's try to use the board tonight to make the motion. I'm going to try real hard to pay attention to the board. I'm going to lean on my vice chair and my parliamentarian to hit me with a hammer if I don't notice it, and then we'll proceed on and see if we can make that work, and that way it could tie in. So next item is going to be the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as is or add any additional items? Commissioner Fritz, yes, sir.
I'd add under the mayor's report, item number... Make it item number four, a letter to TVA, copying all the state legislators, a letter to TVA on behalf of TVA Bull Run Steam Plant and the potential closure of that plant and our support of that area.
That'd be great. We have a motion to add item four A, a letter to TVA, and that was going to be from the mayor, I believe. Correct? Chuck and the commission?
Yeah, but we'll make it under mayor's report, item four.
Well, under... You want to make it under the mayor's report, or you just want it to be four A as the next item?
Under the mayor's report.
Okay, we'll put it under the mayor's report, as you requested. Under... I see what you're saying. It's four under the mayor's report. Yes, sir. We have a motion to add a letter for TVA regarding Bull Run Fossil Facility. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? The regular agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to add the...
Yes, sir.
DOE Discussion, DOE Waste Management Facility.
Where would you like to add that? We have a motion to add the DOE Discussion. Where would you like to add it, sir?
How about under the mayor's report again?
Sounds great.
Number five.
We'll make it item five, DOE Discussion. We have a motion to add DOE Discussion under mayor's report under item five. We have a second. Have a second. Commissioner Meredith, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next will be any other additions before I move on? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, Purchasing Committee Report by Catherine Asher. Mary Catherine?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under item... Section A Contracts Approved by the Law Director, we just have one. It's for a building lease for the Drug Task Force, submitting for your approval. I'm sorry, the Seventh Judicial Task Force submitting for your approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fritz.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Meredith to approve as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
There's Section B Contracts Pending Law Director Approval. I have an update that actually now items two and three are now approved by the law director. So would you like to vote as a group or individually?
We have a motion by Commissioner Fritz.
To approve as a group.
Commissioner Fritz would like to approve as a group. We have a second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Excuse me, I apologize. Commissioner Mead?
I didn't hit the button.
It's okay, we're good.
I'm just saying if one of these has not yet been approved by the law director, it needs to be approved subject to his approval.
Is that okay with the original motion makers and second motion? Good point. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Another item under old business that requires your attention is the copier lease for EMS. Last meeting, it was voted to wait until this meeting to vote on this because Commissioner Waddell believed that Mr. Sweet said he could get a better price than what was being submitted. I spoke with Nathan, and I think there was some miscommunication. He said he could have gotten that better pricing if he had this HIPAA regulation removed from the machine, but the HIPAA... Security is really important to his operations, so he decided not to go for the cheaper option. So submitting for your approval is the copier for EMS.
And it's $211 a month?
Yes. Yes.
Which is one of the most expensive copiers in the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fritz. Do we have a second?
This motion to approve, please.
Is that your motion, Commissioner Fritz? Yes, sir. McCamey seconded the motion to approve. Further discussion? Anything? Go ahead, Commissioner Waddell.
Okay, so it's $211 a month, which is substantially more than what the other departments are paying. So what is your copier going to be used for? What are the things that you need the copier to do that other departments don't?
Well, I didn't really compare to other departments, but we use it for... as a copier for the office, for all the people in the office. That's the copier. For scanning, for printing, for copies of anything we need to make copies of. It is the fax machine as well. All the incoming faxes, especially the materials coming from the hospital, coming from nursing homes. When we coordinate a transport, they send in all that information with patient information that's on it. So it's got to be a secured network and secured system on that. It doesn't automatically print, so those things aren't just laying out as well. It's just a... It's a full building operation that we use it for, for everything, so...
The color part of it. What's the color going to be used for?
So color would just be depending on the event. We typically don't use color, but there are times for like, if we have to make a protocol change, or protocols do have color on them. If there's a presentation that we might put together or do, we might have something colored and printed off in color for that as well. Like when I'll do some of my demand analysis, it's very hard to see that black and white, so have that printed off in color as well. So various things. It's not typically everyday use that we would print off. Anything that's come on letterhead for me would be printed off in color as well. So just various items like that. One thing I also keep in mind is what we had before is $2,500 for just maintenance. So this is about $2,500, not only for maintenance, this is also the printer itself.
But it's limited on the amount of copies? And I guess that's my biggest issue, is that it's $211 where, for instance, the sheriff's department has two printer copiers that are $185 a month for both of them with unlimited copies. I know every department in the county would love to have a color printer, but we can't afford them. And that's my other concern. I don't know how many copies you make. I'm sure it varies month to month, but I'm concerned about approving this and then it coming up that it's a $300 bill one month instead of 211. And that's, you know, still not even... If we start giving a color printer to everybody, you know, to one, somebody else is going to come in the door wanting one, and we just can't afford it. So that's my concern.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Any other comments, discussions on this issue? All right, let's go... Oh, Commissioner McCamey, sorry, sir.
Do we have any departments that have black and white printers only?
We do have... I mean, I know our office has a black and white printer, but we also have a desktop color printer in case we need to print in color. On Brian's radar, IT Brian's radar, is to do a review of all of our devices, multi-function devices, and come up with a matrix. So, you know, if a department's this size, then this is probably the recommended equipment to have. But right now, we don't have that. So the guidance and standardization isn't there yet, so we just rely on departments knowing their own needs.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Thank you, Catherine. Commissioner Creasy?
What is the cost of the printer?
It's a lease, so it's $211 a month. And that's for everything. That's for the copier itself, all the maintenance, all of the ink. So it's all included. And we've had this, basically the same thing, for probably about the past 10 years. But we owned the printer before, and it was making the copies as well. And we did have a maintenance agreement that did have some limitations on it. We weren't able to just... Because the maintenance agreement we had before did replace the ink as well, so we didn't have just carte blanche, unlimited print capabilities prior to. So it's not like we're adding anything new. We've just changed it from owning the device to leasing it at the same cost as that we were paying before.
$2,400 a month?
No, $211 a month.
$2,400 a year?
Yeah, about $2,500 a year. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Is that your copier? For the state? Well, we've got some backups in case.
Nathan, just a quick question.
Sir.
I assume this is within your budget that you had set forward, and you have...
Yes, sir.
You're taking this out of your...
Yes, sir.
Budget that you've set for.
Yes, sir.
You're working within that budget.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions by commissioners? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have two noes, is that right, Commissioner Val and Commissioner Waddell? Thank you, guys. Thank you, Nathan. Go ahead, Catherine.
So did that pass, then?
It did pass.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you and your family.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Next will be the Budget Committee Report by Natalie Herb, Finance Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the first piece of business that I have is the Cash and Fund Balance Report. This is as of November 31st. I'd like to make a note that this is the first report that includes not only our year-end entries, but also includes the auditor's adjusting entries. The general fund, fund balance, the total fund balance is $10,627,000. It is favorable to the same time last year. The cash balance is $5,638,000.
Just a minute, Natalie.
Sure.
I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt.
Sure.
Commissioners, just in case you're not on there, it's on page four for the cash and fund balance. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Sure, no problem.
I want them to follow.
No problem.
Just go ahead.
The cash and fund balance... I'm sorry, the cash balance as of the end of November is $5,638,000. It, too, is favorable to last year, and it's favorable by $1.7 million. The second item that I'd like to discuss is drawing your attention to the Ambulance Fund Balance 118. And you will see that the total fund balance is a deficit of $613,000. As you'll recall, in September, when I reported out, after the county had closed its books, I reported to you that EMS had closed the year with a deficit fund balance of $110,000. At that time, the fundamental reason for the deficit was due to the required accounting treatment in reporting long-term assets and liabilities as that fund had moved into a special revenue fund from an enterprise fund. During November, the county received the auditor's adjusting entries, and there was one that addressed yet another accounting change due to the accounting treatment of the funds. This change dealt with the change of revenue recognition. So that adjustment then changed the deficit fund balance for EMS to $613,000. I reported this to the Budget Committee. They are taking a recommendation that I made to them under advisement and will be discussing it in January. But in an effort to be transparent and obviously to discuss this new learning on the fund balance, I proposed that one remedy that would eliminate this deficit, that it's the solution to forgive EMS the $1,2,677,000 it owes the general fund. So that's just to bring you up to date. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, commissioners? Natalie, just to go along with what you said, that idea, thought, proposal that you mentioned, that'll be discussed in January at the Budget Committee.
And any action that they... or any recommendation that the Budget Committee takes would have to come to commission for approval.
And you're not asking us to take any action tonight?
No.
You're just making us aware.
Giving you the information.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Anderson?
Just to follow up on... You said the change in the accounting treatment from the special fund to the enterprise fund. Can you just kind of explain, like, what the different accounting rules are that would cause that?
Sure. So as an enterprise fund, whatever fund that is, is treated like it's a standalone entity, and it has to incur all of the accounting treatment, revenue recognition, expense recognition, I apologize, as if it were an individual entity. So it incurred workers' comp, it incurred depreciation, and then, as I also mentioned, also the treatment of long-term assets and liabilities because their financial statements have to reflect their entire financial operation. That's as an enterprise fund. At the beginning of last fiscal year, commission approved it becoming a special revenue fund. I want to say, at the time, one of the motivating factors was, as an enterprise fund, commission really didn't have any say in the funding or the operation of an enterprise unit. And I want to say, and again, I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but I saw commission wanting to have a larger part in what that budget and what that operation looked like. So just in making that change to a special revenue fund, there are accounting treatment changes that are required for a special revenue fund. One is, long-term assets and liabilities are no longer reflected on the EMS balance sheet. So there are long-term assets, the underappreciated cost of those assets, their long-term liabilities, their pension liabilities. All of those are treated now on the county-wide financial statement. So that one adjustment immediately changed their operation to reflect a deficit. The second change was revenue recognition. As an enterprise fund, all of their outstanding billing that's on the books with a third party, all of it is... was considered revenue as an enterprise fund. As a special revenue fund, we can only capture one month's worth of revenue to be accrued into last fiscal year. So that, the accounting treatment and the revenue, was a material change that caused this to be reflected now as a deficit fund balance.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Thank you, Natalie. Good question. Any other questions? Continue on.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I guess I would like to move on to the summary of budget amendments. Submitting for your approval individually or as a group, Group Two Appropriations School, requiring board vote, please.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fritz.
You'd approve as a group?
We have a motion to approve as a group. We have a second by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion on approving as a group? Hearing none? All say aye. Any opposed? I apologize, I seen Mead's second come up, and it kind of confused me while I was talking.
I was catching up.
Oh, I know. I was being delayed. All right, let's do that again. All in favor of approving as a group, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Board vote, please?
Oh, yes.
Appropriation?
14 yes votes.
Moving to Group Four Appropriations, Non-Schools, Submitting for Commission's Approval Individually or As a Group.
We have Group Four. We have a motion, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Fritz would like to approve as a group. We have a second by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? All in favor of approving as a groups, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to the board. Motion passes.
So in Group Five, there are two budget amendments coming forward to commission for consideration without a recommendation. So I would like to take these one by one and propose them individually. So beginning with item number two, on behalf of EMS, submitting for commission's approval.
We have item number two under Group Five, EMS Fund 118 for $6,500. Commissioner McCamey has a motion. What's your motion, Commissioner McCamey? Commissioner McCamey's motion's to approve. We have a second. Commissioner Fritz, are you seconding that motion, sir? Yes, sir. Any discussion? Commissioner Mead, and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Waddell. Commissioner Mead?
I just had a question. The travel is going to be done for these post-built inspections. Who does... Is that someone we hired to do that travel, or is it somebody from the EMS?
It was part of the bid, the RFP process, and it's a line item in that proposal. When Nathan was moving forward with the requisition, he asked the question... Nathan was moving forward with the requisition, he asked the question, can travel be capitalized? And it cannot be. So, that's why it's coming up under the ambulance fund rather than the capital projects fund.
Commissioner Waddell?
I believe in budget. Didn't we say we were going to put this off, and you were supposed to bring us an itinerary back? Isn't that what we discussed? Commissioner White?
Yes, sir.
You had asked for information, but it was coming to this body without a recommendation. Do you want to speak to that?
Those were, that was sent in. That was sent in to Annette last week to be forwarded to Commission.
I believe it's under his report.
I don't have the report. I don't know what that is.
It was under the materials submitted on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't know what page that's on. I've seen.
I believe when I.
It's not. I didn't print it out. Sorry.
It was forwarded on to, for Commission, but it was sent to Annette. I think it's in your all's agenda at the very end. There's something on the agenda that says EMS report. I don't know what that is.
The stretchers, we sent over without, without, without anything, but, sorry. The stretchers, I remember we sent to full Commission without any recommendation, but as I recall, we were, we were wanting the sixty-five-hundred back in budget to speak about, and I thought you were supposed to bring that itinerary to budget. That was my understanding in budget.
That's right.
Is that, everybody else in the Budget Committee, is that what we agreed to?
I don't think so. But I look at the, I look at the itinerary. I mean, it's a plan.
I understand it was cut through Commission without a recommendation.
That's correct, Commissioner Fritz. That was the action taken at Budget Committee.
Don't mean to interrupt. Page 128 on your agenda is the information from Nathan on the request. Basically, we have a sixty-five-hundred dollar request to go inspect some purchases of ambulances, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that is the request. Some of the Commissioners had asked questions in budgeting, in my understanding, about what the cost, does it, you know, sixty-five-hundred to go see these. You have submitted your information on why you feel that is. Now, and I don't mean to cut any of the other Commissioners off, but you're not suggesting that you're going to for sure spend sixty-five-hundred. Are you suggesting that that is your budget to work within?
Yes, that's correct. So, there's, there's three visits that we have to make.
Okay. And I apologize. I'm going to floor back up for any discussion from Commissioners. Oh, Mayor, if, no, let me get Bob, Commissioner Smallridge. Mayor, now have you come up. Commissioner Smallridge?
How much was this contract we spent with this company for the, this is the one we ordered the ambulances from? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's two different companies.
And approximately how much was?
Total combined, about five-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand.
Was there nothing in the contract that said they might come here to train, or any training you needed? Is that not possible?
It's not, it's not a, a training for repairs or anything like that. This is, we have designed the ambulances to specification. Now, we're going post-bill to make sure it meets those specifications before they deliver it to us.
Okay, so this is not training. This is to?
Right. This is our inspection, Anderson County's inspection, to make sure it meets bid specs before we receive, we receive the ambulances.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a lively discussion on this in budget, and I really questioned the need for this trip. But after looking at the information that we've received, it makes very, it makes sense to go and inspect these vehicles before they come to Anderson County. It's my understanding, if they come to Anderson County and they're not built according to the specs, then they go back to Canada. And then, if they go back to Canada for the readjustments or whatever, the repairs or the renovations or whatever, then they got to come back to Anderson County. So, as much as I, as much as I think it's a expense that somewhere we are to be able to do without, I don't think we can do without this expense. Do you need two people? Yeah, I think, I think, I think they are to go in as a pair. I spoke with Mr. McCamey, and he understood the need for this inspection. So, Denver, I, there's a, there's a lot of questions. We had a lot of questions. We had a lot of discussion, but I think we are to prove it, send him to Canada and see what happens.
Commissioner White, I just want to make sure, obviously, you're the Chairman of the Budget Committee, if I'm correct?
Correct.
And I just want to make sure we're not taking any action that the Budget Committee has set out different.
We, I didn't, we wanted the full Commission to commit to this. We wanted, we wanted the full Commission to hear everything that we did.
Yes, sir.
The ambulances have been ordered. They're, apparently, they are completed. Mr. Sweet wants to go and inspect them to make sure that they're exactly what he ordered before they travel eleven, twelve-hundred miles south.
Thank you, sir.
Now, that's, I think that's what the Budget Committee, that's what we talked about. What, could there be another way of doing it? I don't know.
It's all right.
Anyway, we're going to depend on Nathan to go and inspect these ambulances, and when they get to Anderson County, we want them to be just exactly right.
Thank you.
It's what we expect.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner McCamey?
Mr. Chairman, this is not something that's unusual. As ambulance director for twenty-three years with Anderson County, I checked the ambulances that we purchased. Went to Louisiana, Orlando. I never did buy one out of Canada. But, but this also was part of the bid process. This is, and the money just cannot be taken out of the capital outlay, and this is only a transfer from within his department. It's not an appropriation. You know, it's a, it's a transfer within the budget. So, I would recommend that we approve it. I think it's very important. You know, we bought a building without an inspection once, and it kind of got ripped over it, so.
We're going to sell that building.
I hope we don't try to sell ambulances.
If anybody drives by 205 Main, there's a big sign, and I don't know who put that up there, but I like it. Call that number. I got another question on that later, Mayor, so don't let me forget when you.
But I would, I would recommend that we approve this.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey, and certainly appreciate your feedback and your knowledge within EMS. Commissioner Jaeger?
Thank you. This is kind of minor, but Horn Lake, Mississippi is a six-hour drive.
Yeah, we won't be flying to that one.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
What's your plan, Nathan, if you don't mind sharing it?
For the Horn Lake?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that won't be a drive down, a very similar drive down the day before, inspect and possibly even drive down, drive back on the same day?
Thank you, Nathan. I appreciate it.
If everything goes well, yeah.
So, it, Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with what I've heard, that someone needs to go and look at these ambulances to make sure that we're getting what we're paying for. I don't think with the financial woes that we've been facing so far that it needs to be two. I'll meet you in halfway on that, but because there's going to be two going for this cost, I'll be voting no on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vow. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. During the Budget Committee meeting, I had requested that an itinerary be drawn up. The problem that I had was that we were just being asked for sixty-five-hundred dollars, that there wasn't a breakdown of what those, that amount was for. In going to Lakeland, Mississippi, I'm just going to say it's five-hundred dollars for a person to drive down there and back in one day, which leaves six-thousand dollars for two people to go to Canada. The response that we got was simply being stated, day one, fly out of McGee Tyson Airport; day two, visit the facility; day three, fly back home. Period. It didn't give the breakdown that, that was requested. I've gotten comments and concerns voiced to me about why are we purchasing a vehicle from Canada? Why wasn't it good enough to be purchased from the United States? I've gotten concerns voiced to me stating, why is it coming out of the taxpayer's pocket, sixty-five-hundred dollars? So, I do have to vote no for this. It's, we didn't get the response that we had requested in budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. I do note, again, and you, it looks like 11 December, you submitted this form which outlines your flights and hotels and your agenda, and I'm sure that was after Commissioner Scott and others on budget had requested it. So, we have it in our package. But, yes, go ahead.
Just a couple of points for clarification. It's two trips to Canada. We have two different vendors that we're buying from. It's not six-thousand for one trip. That is two separate trips. And I did, I did, before I submitted it, I did call Chairman White to clarify the details that I needed included. So, based on that discussion, is how I tabulated, especially on the second day where I detailed all the things that we were going to inspect. So, I did seek some further guidance on that.
Mayor, I apologize. You had your hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify one thing for Commission because I want you as Commissioners to know, and the taxpayers at home as well to know, that Nathan and EMS is committed to shopping the best deals for an inspection in order to get the right equipment here and not have to return it and get into any kind of dispute. One of the things I did talk to our Finance Director about, I do need to get with Jay Jaeger on an opinion from this, and the reason Nathan cannot produce an itinerary, like, we couldn't go to an Orbitz or an Expedia and get ticket prices, because this was in the bid itself. And so, what happened is when we, part of that bid process is that they have to build into their quote that they give us as a county, travel for inspection. And so, that is the number that the company put in. We will get that down as low as we can, as long as it doesn't put us in violation with that company, and then that company can turn around and say, we're in breach of contract because we're not going to pay the travel. So, as long as our law director gives us the go-ahead, we will shop that travel to get that down.
Thank you, Mayor.
If that helps any.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner McCamey, would you like to add that to your motion upon approval of the law director? Just to make, would that be okay with you?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fritz, would that be okay with you as well, to add that to the motion? Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye. Is this a?
Board vote.
Okay, I apologize. Let's go to the board.
And it's because they crossed major line items or payroll is why it requires a board vote.
Thank you for keeping me straight.
Because it, well, it's, it's a transfer.
Motion passes nine to five.
Passing nine to five?
Yes, passed. Correct, Mr. Parliament?
Yes, sir.
So, the next budget amendment is number 11, on behalf of the general fund from Veterans Services, and because it affects payroll, requires board vote.
Have a motion. Commissioner Fritz, your motion, sir?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries?
Board vote.
Oh, sorry. I got to get back on my spot on my page. Get your vote. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Motion passes fourteen. Yes.
And then, the last one out of this group is number 13, on behalf of EMS. This also came to you tonight without a recommendation from Budget Committee.
Okay, we have a motion out of Group Five, EMS Fund 118. What page is that? Six.
And it will require a board vote, please.
I'm sorry, 10, 11.
10, 11, okay. And 13, okay. So, what we have is a request from EMS, as stated, transfer payroll in EMS Fund 118. Justification was the purchase of three new stretchers for new ambulances. New ambulances are required to come with new mounting systems. Current stretchers do not fit new systems. There's not enough funding to purchase four new stretchers, so we will use existing funds in budget to upgrade current stretchers to fit the new mounting systems. The motion was passed to full Commission tonight without a recommendation for approval. We have a motion, Commissioner Fritz.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second to that motion? We have a second. Commissioner Mead, you're seconding Commissioner Fritz's motion, I'm sure. Okay. Discussion. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Nathan, I have a couple of questions for you. During the Budget Committee, there was another page that went with this for about fifteen-thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is it?
No action was taken on it, so, I mean, I can speak to it, but I didn't put it in there.
Yeah, I'd like that to be addressed to Commission as well, so that they understand that there were two parts to this. There was an if and or statement, pretty much.
I can speak to it if you like. Sure. So, Nathan had presented the one that's in the minutes, that's number 13. He had also presented an alternative, which was also a transfer for payroll. It was in the amount of fifteen-thousand dollars, and the decrease was from medical personnel, and the increase was to maintenance, repair, and equipment. And it was an alternative, if Budget Committee and by extension Commission didn't want to approve the transfer of sixty-two thousand, then this was going to be, to upgrade five current stretchers rather than purchasing three new.
Thank you. And the reason why I'm asking about that is during Budget Committee, Nathan, if I'm not mistaken, I had asked why you were pulling these funds or requesting to pull the funds out of the medical personnel and the payroll section. I said, what happens if you need to hire someone? Because you've been saying you need to hire some people, and I think the response was, that's just not going to happen right now. Something along those lines.
No, the response was asking, and I believe Commissioner Waddell was the one that brought it up. He had concerns over if we needed the money in the budget later in the year. My response was, the status that we have right now, we already have a savings in medical personnel, so that's where we're pulling from. Because we haven't been able to realize the full staffing of our department, and we're already halfway, almost halfway through the year. In order for us to exhaust all the funds, we would have to actually overstaff. And that's the point I was trying to make, that that, that didn't seem like that was going to happen either.
Well, you did give us an option, though. You said, if you can't have sixty-two thousand, you were requesting fifteen thousand to be able to retrofit or to repair what you do have, correct?
Yes, so there was two options.
Sure, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Thank you. It, budget process, you were allocated eight-hundred-thousand dollars for capital purchases, which included ambulances and equipment, cardiac monitors and stretchers. Why weren't these stretchers in that eight-hundred-thousand-dollar original allocation?
Yeah, so looking at it, the, the top three priorities was ambulances, cardiac, well, actually, it's cardiac monitors, ambulances, and stretchers. Looking at the best way to maximize that for the top two priorities, we exhausted the eight-hundred thousand. So, looking at that, we had these options, be able to, A, the worst-case scenario, retrofit what we currently have that is beyond its life expectancy, or B, to try and find ways within the budget. Now, I did speak previously in the fiscal year, hoping that we would have received our Medicaid kicker money and possibly be able to flex that in some way, but that has not happened. We have not received any of our payments from Ten Care on that We have not received any of our payments from Ten Care on that yet.
It was always required that stretchers were going to be part of this?
Yes, sir. And I believe, again, at the very end of the material, like where the itinerary for the travel was, there's for the stretcher as well. I did write a one-page write-up on that and submitted it for your consideration to consider. But it is a federal mandate, federal requirement with all new ambulances. They came out in 2016 with changes and Tennessee delayed until 2017. But due to federal regulations, the old mounting system that we have, you can't put those in new ambulances.
Okay, then I guess I didn't understand your answer to my question of why stretchers weren't in this original eight hundred thousand then. Maybe, could you just re-answer that? Because I still don't, I just don't get why the stretchers weren't in this eight hundred thousand allocated if you knew we needed stretchers.
Right, so the top two priorities?
Right.
We targeted that to replace all of our cardiac monitors?
Sure.
And then to buy four ambulances.
Okay.
And then the stretchers, we figured that we'd be able to do it within our own budget if we had to, as far as upgrading what we currently have. So we targeted the top two priorities and instead of cutting back on those top two priorities to fit the stretchers in, we found an alternate way that we could get the stretchers. Either we could get by for this fiscal year or move on to the next fiscal year.
I'm trying to find. It said you may need to ask for more money if we take money out of these codes.
There's always the potential, if you take money out of a code, that I may have to go later and take a transfer back into those codes. Yes, sir.
Okay. I can't vote yes on this, but I appreciate your answers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Waddell.
Commissioner Jaeger just touched on one thing, because I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. In the meeting, in the budget meeting, I asked, if we take money out of these codes, are you going to come back in the months to come and ask for more money? And the response was no. It wasn't exactly no, but it was kind of, well, I wish, you know?
Sure.
Because you're not, you're not, okay. But in the agenda, it says, I'll read it, as we balance the budget during the year, I may have to come back to you to transfer funds back in to some of these codes. The best options would be for the county to assist the purchase of these stretchers outright as a capital expense. So that's something totally different now. Is, you said no, but now it's a possibility. So I just want to make sure that when I decide how to vote on this, that I'm comfortable with it when and if you do come back asking for money. That's the first thing.
And the intent is not for us to come back and ask for the money, it's if we have to transfer from another code back into it within our existing budget.
Okay. So you wouldn't be coming back asking for money from us, from the General Fund? You would be coming back to ask to transfer money around, correct?
That is definitely not my intent to come back and ask the county for it.
All right. So are you asking for an outright capital expense for these stretchers?
Well, that definitely is an option, but I'm asking for the transfer from these funds?
Okay.
That we've submitted to Budget Committee.
Here's my only issue, Nathan, is we had a discussion by email about other trucks that we could have got, less expensive trucks. To me, me personally, I'm not the Director, I'm just a Commissioner. Me personally, if I knew I needed stretchers and I needed monitors and I needed trucks and I only had eight hundred thousand dollars, if I had to downgrade from a Lexus to a Mazda, then I would do so in order to fulfill all of my needs. I mean, I know you all need these, I do. I know you need them. But you're making it hard on me because my constituents are very vocal about this. I've received more calls about this in the last week than I've received about anything in my short time as a Commissioner. So I'll pass on to someone else.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan, I'm sorry you're having to stand there for so long. I know this seems like we're all ganging up on you, but in budget, I know we kind of hashed some of this, but looking at it from a personal standpoint, when we had the audit and they highlighted those three issues, that I think they even called it critical issues? Was that a word that they used?
Critical issues did not include stretchers.
Okay. So we get this eight hundred thousand dollars and in my mind, I'm thinking, ma'am, we're really gonna, we're really gonna put a dent in their problems down there, we're gonna solve some issues. Because I remember in the conversations in budget, in the Audit Committee meetings and in Commission meetings, we did talk about ambulances, cardiac monitors and stretchers. I know stretchers were involved in those conversations. I don't know how much, but I remember. I remember writing that down on some of my notes that we were going to be able to do this. I'm thinking we're going to get some breathing room until we get the short-term and the long-term plans, you know, laid out and see what we're looking at and then we can start establishing a plan to replenish some of these pieces of equipment that are definitely getting old and worn out. It broke my heart when I found out a couple of weeks ago at Budget Committee meeting that the stretchers didn't get purchased out of the eight hundred thousand. If we would have gotten, and I think the other Commissioners have already hit this a couple of times, I apologize for bringing you back to it, if we could have gotten less expensive trucks, would we have been able to have afforded those stretchers?
So it's a simple answer. I mean, you pay less for something than you have more money to pay for something else. But referencing back to the audit that you brought up and including in the email that I sent to Commissioner Waddell and Chairman, a lot of the things in the bid specifications were based off of the items that came out of the audit. So it wasn't just things that necessarily me as Nathan Sweet wanted. We built part of that audit off, or part of our bid off of the EMS operational audit. And to recall to, the EMS operational audit did call for ambulances and for cardiac monitors as critical. We did not buy as many as they say we needed to buy. Their recommendation was for County Commission to give us one point five million dollars last fiscal year and one point five million dollars this current fiscal year in order to address those items, just those items, not the others. So with the eight hundred thousand, we targeted the two critical items that they said, which was stretch, or not stretch, but cardiac monitors and ambulances. We are making those decisions based off of what the operational audit came out and said. That's what we're gearing towards. And I don't know if the email was shared with the information that referenced the operational audit that I sent to Commissioner Waddell and the Chairman. But I did reference the page numbers that talked about the items that were included in the bid for what we sent out. So we're trying, I'm trying the best I can to incorporate those items from the EMS operational audit as I go along.
When did we know that we weren't going to be able to get the stretchers? At what point in the purchasing and the ordering of the equipment did we know, okay, we're not going to have enough for the stretchers?
I believe it's after we awarded the bids for the ambulances.
It would have been around September. I mean, to the point, the only other option that I see that Nathan had was not to buy the fourth vehicle, but that he was, based on his prioritization, was trying to get his, the vehicles that were seen as critical.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vow. Commissioner McCamey.
Once again, this is a transfer within your budget.
Yes, sir.
This is not an appropriation. This is not new money. This is money that's already been appropriated in the ambulance service budget. And if you need money transferred back into these codes that you're taking the money out of, you would take it from somewhere else within your budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Fritz.
Just following up on what Commissioner McCamey says. We have done this for all the other departments, from the Sheriff's Departments to Trustee's Office and everything. Money within their own departments to buy Sheriff's Cars, help with the trustee to do various things and other stuff, money that's in their department, money that he's already saved, that he's not going to have to make up, money he's already saved because we're so far along within the year. That's what he's going to use to buy the stretchers with. So it's not money that he's going to have to make up on. From the operational audit, how they came back and said how we have grossly underfunded, I agree, we ought to be taking money out of the fund balance and buying these things outright. But he's not asking that. He's asking to use money he has saved already to buy these things. And I think it's something that we ought to go ahead and take care of because we get what we pay for. And we need to get these things furnished for these new ambulances that we're getting.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Waddell, the limit is usually two, but sir, I'm going to give you a brief time to give a follow-up response. Go ahead, Commissioner Waddell.
I understand that this is just a transfer, but we're being asked to forgive six hundred thousand dollars of debt with EMS. And all I'm trying to do is pinch every penny we can and save every dime we can so that we can chip away at that debt. You know, I just don't want to see money being spent where it shouldn't be spent.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. At this time, we're not being asked to forgive any debt today. You just discussed that idea, but I do understand what you're saying, Commissioner Waddell. Very healthy discussion, I appreciate it. I'm just going to ask for some clarity before we go to a vote, but I see Commissioner Anderson has something. I'd like for the mayor to be able to speak as well. So Commissioner Anderson and then the mayor.
I just want to follow up. I know Denver's been kind of communicating our district's perspective really well. I'm getting the same feedback that Denver is. My phone's blowing up right now from people watching at home, so they're really interested in fiscal responsibility for the whole county. But I think that, I know the feedback I'm getting from back home leans more towards maybe retrofitting the stretchers that we have and as opposed to buying the brand-new ones. So that's kind of the way I'm leaning. So thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Anderson. Mayor Frank.
Just a couple of things to, with respect to the retrofitting, it really does not make any sense to retrofit stretchers that are at the end of their useful life. I mean, so basically, we're just going to be, that literally will be throwing away money in order to meet the federal requirements. But if we want to do that, we can, in order to meet the federal requirements. But I want to kind of just speak about capital needs in the county and I always attend, I've probably missed a couple of times in my years here, Budget Committee. And I know Budget Committee has really been making capital needs a priority. And this is something, we would not be here tonight talking about an interdepartmental transfer between funds if we had a capital projects fund that was healthily funded. And in fact, we had just reached out to McMinn County and back in 1998, they made a commitment to becoming debt-free. And it took a long time. They marched onward. What happened is they had to go out, do a large amount of borrowing. The Commission there said, we don't want to ever be in this position again. And so it took years and they have gotten out of that debt with a combined plan that funds capital needs. And I think now, I think this year, they're funding that, those capital needs at four million dollars a year. I've been here over time and seen us transfer almost six hundred thousand out of the Sheriff's Department to purchase vehicles, radio equipment and other needs. And we've done that pretty much on a yearly basis since I've been here. And that's not the fault of the Sheriff's Department. If, you know, the schools, Dr. Parrott came last year during the budget process and said, we're having to fund things, a roof repair and those things out of our operational costs. For you as Commissioners, you don't want that because when you're looking at the budget process, you're looking at what you think is that year's budget. And then what ends up happening is in order to fund our capital needs, we're pulling out of these operational costs to fund capital. So it's not really a transparent reflection for the taxpayer and for you as the decision-makers. So we wouldn't be here if we, you know, if we get on the right track. I think Chairman White is committed to doing that. I think he's brought that up and is taking the lead on that. So we do apologize that we're having to do that, but there is no capital fund to draw from. These are critical needs. It is a mandate and it is within the department. As Nathan said, I think he's doing the responsible thing. The kicker money is not here yet, that Ten Care money. Now, the state is telling us it's coming. They were doing some reworking. They keep assuring us it's coming, but he doesn't want to come to you to ask to use that, some funds that aren't here yet. He wants them to be here yet. So that's why he's asking to transfer out of existing funds.
Thank you, Mayor, for the explanation.
Absolutely.
Look, I think it's time for we go take a vote. Again, I appreciate all the discussion. Each one of us are elected to represent our districts and I think we all do a great job and I encourage anyone to always give feedback. So good discussion, good communication. Here's my only question. Commissioner Fritz, you made a motion. We have to go off the minutes that have been presented to us by the Budget Committee. And again, I just want to be clear, Natalie, and I'm not debating, I just want us to know what it is the sixty-two thousand, six dollars and forty cents is going to buy, because the justification says this, and I don't think this is the Commissioner's motion, but if it is, he can tell me. Purchase of three new stretchers for new ambulances. New ambulances are required to come with new mounting systems. Current stretchers do not fit new system. There is not enough funding to purchase four new stretchers, so we will use the existing funds in budget to upgrade current stretcher to fit new mounting system. So here's my question. Are we buying new stretchers or are we using the sixty-two thousand dollars to retrofit? Because that's what's in front of us and that's what we're going to vote on. Before you answer, I'd like to get Commissioner Fritz's response to what his motion is exactly. And if it's simply you're approving the sixty-two thousand, that's fine.
Purchase the new stretchers.
Okay. Is that what you were approaching us for? And that is that your request?
Yes, sir. The sixty-two thousand is to purchase three new stretchers.
Okay. Any other questions? Is that your understanding too, Commissioner McCamey? Okay. All right, so this money is going to be used to purchase three new stretchers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Is everybody clear on that? Any other questions?
One question.
Commissioner?
What would be the cause to retrofit since that's in the minutes?
The other one was around fifteen thousand dollars to retrofit.
Seemed like it was three thousand per stretcher or something.
Something like that, yeah.
We've got five current stretchers to fit.
Right. Yeah.
Do you understand what I'm trying to do? I'm just trying to get clarity.
Yes, sir.
Because it just seems like we're kind of doing both and I.
Well, and we, so we're buying four ambulances.
Yes, sir.
So buying, we only had enough in our budgets for me to find a transfer to buy three new.
Okay.
So we're going to have to retrofit some in order to have all of the new ambulances have a stretcher that fits. So we didn't have enough in our existing budget that I can find right now to buy four new stretchers. I found enough to buy three.
So sixty-two thousand, six dollars and forty cents?
That will buy three new stretchers. And out of our current code that this would go into, there'd be enough to upgrade for the fourth ambulance.
Okay. All right, very good. All right. Good debate, good discussion. We beat this round pretty good, so I think it's time to go to vote. Let's go to the board. Nine votes passes, nine to five. Next item.
And then finally, Group Six, there's one appropriation, General Fund, unassigned fund balance, and it's moving the fourteen thousand back into the unrestricted or unassigned fund balance. Submitting for your approval. Board vote two, please.
Commissioner Fritz, motion to approve as presented. Do we have a second? Commissioner Mead, any discussion? Motion is to make the transfer for the General Fund 101 of the fourteen thousand. Is that correct, Natalie?
It's an appropriation, putting it back in.
Appropriation, I apologize.
But yes.
All right. Seeing no questions, let's go to the board and vote. All right. Any other, seeing no questions, let's go to the board and vote. Commissioner Jameson?
I apologize. Thank you, sir.
Motion passes unanimously.
That's all I have from the Budget Committee.
Thank you.
Ready to go on to the Finance Committee?
Let's do it. Let's do it.
All right. Great. There are two items coming to you tonight on behalf of the Finance Committee. The first one, that is a request for commission action. As you heard last month, this contract was also in Catherine's report. The second phase of the ESG project is, there are two resolutions in your package seeking general bond obligations for $11,270,000 from Funds 152 and 156. I would like to point out that assuming this low interest rate of 3.75% over 20 years, the cost of this will be $5,246,000 in interest, $116,000 in underwriter discount, and almost $120,000 in the cost of issuance. So with that, there is a recommendation from the Finance Committee for Commission's approval of Resolution 19-12-723 and 19-12-724 with Anderson County Schools to pay the principal and interest to these respective funds. So what is the will of commission?
We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Meredith, this is approved as presented, sir.
Sir.
I have a second by Commissioner Fritz. Any discussion? Commissioner Yeager?
This three and three quarters was an estimate.
That's correct.
And it would probably, the way rates are compared to when this was presented, be lower, more in the three and a half range. So I think it will be a little cheaper than what this even shows.
I'm just pointing out what the preliminary analysis is.
Yeah, but that's what Scott was saying, and I followed a little bit, too.
Just the facts, man. I like your style.
I mean, again, it kind of follows up on the topic that we were just talking about.
Exactly. Agreed. And good comments, Commissioner Yeager. Your point is, we could even save more. Natalie's just making sure we're covered and as presented. So I appreciate both of the comments. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, let's go to the board for a Motion passes unanimously. And I would just like to add that, again, the school is taking care of all these costs.
Correct.
And they're going to pay for it out of savings and the school and...
Out of their operational budget.
Yes. So we appreciate that and wish them much success, just like in the past. Go ahead, Natalie. I apologize.
And then the last thing that I have for you tonight is to accept, seeking a motion to accept the Finance Committee minutes as part of Commission's minutes.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fritz as presented. Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There aren't any other questions?
None. Merry Christmas to you and your family.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you for all you do. Let's see. Everybody still good?
Yep.
Dr. Parrott?
First of all, I want to thank the commission for allowing the school board to really and truly meet some needs, some much-needed needs in our school system, especially with the safety of our buildings and the things like that. I think you're going to be very well, once we get this started, very well pleased with what the outcome of that's going to be. And I don't take those votes for granted. I really appreciate what you're all doing for the school system. I'm going to be short and sweet tonight and just let you know that in the commission, the minutes I sent you all, there's a lot of great things going on in our school system. We're up to 23 seniors that have over 30 on their ACT. We just got an award from AP. We're on the AP honor row, and that come from the place that does all the AP testing. And they said that we had more students take the test, but also we upped that by about 30%. But also our scores that come in, we had a whole lot more students score three and four on our AP exam. So that's a great thing. So we'll be getting to you some more things about that. And in the January commission update, I'll let you know about all the great things our school system has been doing to help the needs of our community. I just got a big letter from the good neighbors at Norris today, how much they really thank our school system for the things that they brought in, the students and the community that worked together to feed these families, and not even, and not only feed them during Christmas, but to also give them gifts. So we make sure every child will have that. And then I just want to say thank you to a lot of our community members, especially Clayton Holmes. They will be at Briceville this week, and every student will receive a gift from Santa Claus. And that's just, you know, this is a great community and do a lot of great things. I really appreciate that. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. Commissioner Yeager?
Ask this out now, then I'm going to re-ask him. How's the enrollment look?
The enrollment is staying steady right now. It fluctuates, maybe down 10 and up 10, but from the start of school, we're about the same as we were.
Okay.
Okay. But that trend goes down. We end up losing about 50 students a year when we start out, and it kind of stays that way. We're hoping with some excitement from CUB about the new house tops, we'll get a lot more students in.
Excellent. Commissioner Scott? Sorry, Yeager, can you finish?
I am. Thank you. Dr. Parrott, can you kind of give us an idea of who Mark Tyler Nobleman is and why he visited Norris Middle School?
He is, they do once a month, they do a, have an art, they have an author come in, and that was his month to come in. And he did, he come in and talked about the book he did, and signed the book and things like that. So it was a pretty neat thing. It was about the, he's actually has an author of over 70 books, the one, Bill the Boy Wonder, The Secret Co-Creator, Batman. And I mean, it was just amazing to listen to him speak about the things he knew and how he did the writing and stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Anyone else? Commissioner?
I noticed in your reports, you were bragging about the middle schools.
Yes.
Yeah. Could you enlighten us for the audience?
Well, there's, I don't want to get to that. I think one of the things that our middle school is, the art show that they've been doing, that was a big, big, great thing that they did, and they have the art night. The other thing I think that was great was, we talked about it last month, was the ROTC program at Clinton Middle School. And if you were there, that was just a tremendous thing that they did to just honor our veterans. And I go back, and I really am honored by what the county commission did during a resolution for our school system. I really tell you, one of the things I've done during this year, I called it, and I've said this before, it's called Lunch and Learn. And I go out and I spend about two hours with a group of students at our high schools and our middle schools. And I've been to one middle school. I went to Lake City Middle School last month, and I'm going to Clinton Middle School this month. And just to listen at, it's kind of just a thing that we say, hey, what's going on in your school system? It's just me and them and Ms. Pam. And she takes notes. And they're just brutally honest. And some things that they've come up with, we've talked about, about how they wanted more speakers, just like what you said, we want more speakers to come in. We want to know about these things. And I think it gives them not only an opportunity to talk to the director of schools, it gives them buy-in in their school. And, you know, they talk, you always talk about the food and things like that. And it's amazing what you can find out from them. So I was excited about that. But the other thing, you know, Lake City Middle, they went and did the, oh, where they went over to, I want to say the Fantasy of Trees. My mind went blank right then. They helped with the Fantasy of Trees, and it's just giving back to that community. So I think there's a lot of great things going on there. As you know, I can talk about school systems all night, but you may not want to hear that all night.
It never gets boring, trust us. Dr. Parrott, I thought I saw in the notes, and maybe I'm wrong, but did I see where, is it Grand Oaks is going to get the gym?
Yes, yes. As you know, we have really, as I said, when I was on the other side of the budget, I was really wanting to spin, spin, spin. And when I'm on this side, they said I've got pretty cheap about things. But that was one of the, one of the things that, and I'm going to give Mr. White some of that credit. When I became director of schools, I met with a lot of you and asked what you wanted to see of our school system. There was two things that Mr. White talked about. He talked about painting the roof at Norwood Middle School, and he talked about getting, he talked about getting that gym. And that school down there is one of the places that it's growing. The county is growing in that area. And that was the only school that did not have a full-size gym. And through good stewardship with the school board, we've been able to take that funds out of our undesignated. And we've been through the planning commission, and we will be putting out, put that out for bids next month. So hopefully, when school starts back in August, we will have a full-size gym with a stage. That was one of the things. They can't have a stage. They can't have enough people in there when they do programs. So they can't put the whole school in there at one time. This will allow that. It'll have handicap access. So we're really excited about that. But as you say, when we talk about these capital outlays, it would have been a whole lot easier if we'd had that in a fund instead of having to save it for over three years to get it there.
I think the mayor's going to include you in that process.
Yeah, I think she is. But I think that, and you know, that is, when we put money back into our schools, I want Anderson County schools to be a destination school system. And as I said, I'll end on this. One thing that I'm concerned about is I'm concerned about vouchers. And I'm concerned about what that will do for our county school system and what it can do for, it can erode a school system real fast. And there's one of those things that, once you start on that down trajectory, it's hard to get it stopped. When you start taking those funds out and you start cutting, start cutting things. We put in a lot of great things in the last four years with our art and our music, ROTC. You know, as good as ROTC is, it costs the county. We have to put funds in there. It's about 50%. But I would hate to see us have to start cutting programs and become, as my predecessor said, just a mediocre school system. I want us to be a great school system. So I think we've got to look out for things that, as I talked about, that landfill 200 years, I want to look out 50 years from now and see where this school system is. So the things we put in place, I leave it in better shape than what they left me, so.
Thank you. And I'm just really happy to see that the gym was going to go in. I know Commissioner White's worked on that and asked over the years.
You'll have to give me another list. Now, I'm sure he's got one, right?
And the other item was Lake City, are they getting a new roof put on? Was that it?
Yes, yes.
And just for my two cents, I think Anderson County school system is a destination school system. And I see a lot of good things. I don't hear hardly, I don't know about the rest commissioners, but I don't hear anything but positive. And what I really love is it's the academics, academics, academics. Sports is second, and the other activities, arts and everything, all very important. But I think the academics is what you guys are focused on, and we appreciate that.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments for Dr. Parrott?
That's it. Good job. I got a pen for that. I'll give, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. Let's take a 10-minute recess real quick.
You got to go check the score. Hey, okay, you going to check?
We are ASAP of Anderson. We are celebrating 10 years of prevention, powered by more than 11,000 hours given by volunteers like you. Together, we've reduced underage substance misuse in our county by 53.5%. Our brand has changed, but our mission remains the same: Prevention Works.
Next item on the agenda is gonna be the county mayor. County mayor, please.
Didn't mean to rush you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one little note. Thank you for what you do and Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you and Merry Christmas to you.
And to Dr. Parrott's point, one of the things he was mentioning was the junior ROTC program. I had the opportunity to attend a parade for the ROTC program, JROTC, in Oak Ridge. And they now have over 100 cadets. And one of the things that I wanted to convey to the county is that the county has been a very active participant in helping them build that program. The Navy did not fund that program until they could prove that they could sustain the cadet enrollment of 100 per year for two years in a row. So the county has helped assist and facilitate and, and helping them get uniforms. And I think that is a great example of cooperation and partnership and what it's all about. So it's not just about protecting our program in the county, it's also building that program somewhere else. So I would, I really wanted to give a shout out to the county for their work and help in building that program in Oak Ridge, because it, it was an impressive site.
So, don't mean to interrupt, is that, are you saying there's roughly 100 in the Oak Ridge system now?
Yes, yes.
It'd be nice to know how many county-wide now, because we got a lot of young men and women involved in the ROTC in Anderson County, Clinton, now Oak Ridge. That's, that's impressive, because that's our future and that's, that's impressive.
Chief Nichols, who is in charge of the program at Oak Ridge High School, he specifically said to me, "I want you to know how much the county has helped us. We wouldn't be here." So.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
Very good.
Build future leaders.
Absolutely. The items on the agenda I have before you, I submitted it as part of the package. There's an order appointing commissioner. I received a recommendation from the Powell Clinch Utility District to reappoint Mr. John Stair as commissioner for the PCUD Board. I accepted that recommendation and per TCA requirements, I'm requesting the attached order be entered into the minutes of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question, Commissioner?
For information, how many members are on that board about?
I believe there are three members. There are two and generally one represents the Campbell County portion. So that, I could get that TCA.
Do you get to nominate two?
They actually make the recommendations themselves and then they send that to me and they, they make a recommendation for who they are choosing and then they send two other choices. And if, if I reject that nomination, then I'm to go from that list. If I reject the entire list, then I send it back to them and they submit three new appointments with one primary recommendation. And then I could also not act and, and their recommendation automatically takes effect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question, Commissioner Jameson. Any other questions for the mayor on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is per the requirements of our participation in Tennessee's Three-Star Program. This is a program under Economic and Community Development and the county has taken advantage of a lot of benefits as being a part of this program. There are three requirements. There used to be two. This year, they added one about internal controls. And so I have the motions before you. I've already provided those to the clerk's office so that they'll have exactly what they need on those. The first is that, a motion that commission has accepted and reviewed with me, the debt management policy that is currently on file in the comptroller's office. That was distributed, that maintains Department of Finance, Finance Director Erb maintains that posting on the county's website. It's our debt management policy, how debt is handled. A lot of that deals with requirements for the state. There is also a balloon debt policy. Back in the day, Anderson County had done a balloon note and the state had passed some legislation managing that. They really want counties to totally move away from balloon debt. So that is in there as Exhibit A as well as part of our policy.
That's on page 86 in your package. We have a motion, Commissioner Meredith. As presented, Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Yes, sir. Any questions, discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second motion under, per these requirements, is a motion acknowledging that commission and the county mayor are aware that prior to the issuance of debt, an annual cash flow forecast must be prepared for the appropriate fund and submitted to the comptroller's office. So for instance, with this school project, there will be an entire cash flow report that is presented, that will be sent to the, or created, that will be sent to the comptroller's office. They will actually issue a letter of approval and review and then that is distributed back to you all.
Very good. Is this a new motion?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm apologize. Has, has the board been clean? So the same, same characters have motioned again?
I think it used to stay up there.
Okay. Uh-oh, Mead beat you to the bunch. Commissioner Mead made the motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Smallwidge, seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then this year, under the three-star requirement, they have asked that we do a motion acknowledging that county offices, funds and departments under the authority administration of elected officials of Anderson County are required to develop a documented system of internal controls. That's the third motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mead.
State law requirement that we do it, so I think we should.
Have a second by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I know we have the letter, but I also wanted to take the opportunity to mention the Chancellor's Award for Excellence in Philanthropy, if I can get it out, was presented to a whole host of coalition partners in Anderson County. And this is a very historical event. It's going to be a great legacy for you as county commissioners for Anderson County. The coalition partners are Eagle Ben Manufacturing, SL Tennessee, Aishen Automotive Castings, Tennessee, the Education Foundation for the City of Clinton as well as Anderson County Schools, Anderson County Government and Vice Chairman Creasy was on hand, as well as myself, to receive our award. Anderson County Chamber of Commerce was there. Commissioner Meredith, the president, accepted that award. The City of Clinton, Darrell Hensley, City of Norris, Anderson County Economic Development Association and the Anderson County Board of Education. And this is another one of those exciting things that is happening to Anderson County when all of these people came together for, you know, of the same mind to advance our county and help the people in our county. And so I wanted to ask commission to think about, we received one of these and I know the county received one back in 2012. And I could put it in the mayor's office, but I think it belongs somewhere where everyone can see it, not just in the mayor's office, because this is a county award. And so I wanted you all to maybe make a recommendation of where we should hang it, whether you want it in this room or in the hallway somewhere. And I think, okay, okay.
Not at my house. It wouldn't last very long. You're broke. Mayor, that's very impressive and I appreciate you sharing that with us. When was that? Last Friday?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. And I appreciate you attending and those that could attend. That's tremendous. Commissioner Fritz, I see he's got something on. I think it would be too, yes. Yeah, great idea.
On the first floor?
Everybody like that idea? Mayor, let's do that.
Well, let's do it.
And thank you for asking.
We'll make it happen.
We appreciate you doing that.
And thank you for making it happen. The last item that was placed on the agenda is you have before you a draft letter. This is a public comment. TBA is accepting as part of their assessment, their assessment requirements, they have a public comment period that ends on December 19th. And you have before you a letter that I did work with the chairman and then also Commissioner Fritz, because they are in the district for Bull Run Fossil Plant that we've known as Bull Run Steam Plant. Basically, the boiled cabbage version, version of this three-page letter is that we hope that for the sake of employment and, and the economy in our area, that they do keep it open, but if they do not keep it open, that they keep in mind the environmental impact of that facility and its closure and then also the economic impact of the closure. And mainly, you can see in the letter here, the, the main issue is we have, this is a prime site and if they do close it, which would impact our county economically, that they look at one of the things that commission had recommended back in August of 2016, that TBA constructed natural gas combined cycle power plant on that property. If they do not want to maintain an asset in our community, that they decommission that facility, they don't leave it vacant, they redevelop it quickly. This is a prime location with rail, water, road. We have TDOT working on a new expansion project, project on US 25W and it's our state Route 170, Itchmore Road right through Claxton. And this would be a prime location for economic development to take place. So that is the letter before you kind of summed up.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fritz to accept the letter as presented, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? I'll just add, for the folks in our district and for the county for that matter, that this, this is a response, as you've already said, that needs to be made by the 19th. From what I understand, the TBA board will be meeting in the first quarter, I think it's in February, to make a decision on the future of Bull Run Steam Plant in, I think, Paradise up in Kentucky. So I appreciate you, Mayor, putting the letter together. I think you covered all of the aspects of the possibilities of expanding with 155 acres and putting ash over there or the plant shutting down altogether or the, which I hope they put a natural gas plant in, because the construction for that would be a tremendous boon for our county and the city. And I also like to thank the City of Oak Ridge for their kind letter from Mayor Gooch and, and their, their kind words. It kind of mirrored your same comments, so we're all together in that respect. So Commissioner Fritz, did you have anything you wanted to add? And I'll come back to you, Commissioner Mead.
Just as, you know, just mirror what you said, you know, I just appreciate you and the mayor doing what y'all did to help pull it together and, because I know the impact it'll have, not only on our district, but the county as a whole. And I think the decision's supposed to be made somewhere around January or there shortly after, so it's not far.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Mead?
Maybe I'm just being crazy. We got copies of this going all the way to our United States senators. Why not include the president? He's really interested in these kind of things. Preserving coal plants is one of them. I mean, would it hurt to, I mean, I don't expect it's gonna be the first thing on his reading list some morning.
Well, I don't mean to.
But somebody on his staff might just mention that it's happened. But who knows?
Not to be disrespectful, I think if we tweeted it to him, we'd probably get a quick response.
I wasn't gonna ask for that.
Well, I will. I don't mind. Sorry, Commissioner Mead, would you like to add that to the list?
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, we should, I think we should consider that.
I'm happy with that, Mayor.
Sure. I've already made the note.
Very good.
We'll add it to the list.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Last item we added is five, you may not have remembered, but DOE discussion.
Oh, yes, yes.
And workshop, Commissioner Creasy and yourself.
Yeah, and like I said, under the comments period, I'd like to get a feel from the commission and I'll make a motion and I guess that'll give me an idea how the commission feels. So I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing on January 3rd at 6 o'clock.
We have a motion as second.
For the location?
Just, just for clarification, Mayor, is it best we do, instead of a public hearing, a workshop so we can facilitate it quicker? Jade, it's gotta have 10 days for a public hearing?
Depends on what it is. I think this issue, 10 days would be satisfactory as long as we perfect public notice. Or what is your goal here? To receive public comment? Yes, we have a public hearing as a proper.
Does that give us enough time? Because he only extended us for 30 days. Commissioner McCamey?
Usually on a public hearing, we sit here and listen to the public and we've done that. I would rather go with a workshop. That allows us to, you know, inter- That allows us to, you know, interact and make our own comments, where that, on a public hearing, we just sit here and listen to the public and let them voice their concerns. So, I would rather term it as a workshop, and I still think seven to 10 days is adequate in public notice. But we still wouldn't be able to take any action in a workshop, but we could know at our January meeting then what happened and go from there.
And that would provide the public to make comment as well, though, in the workshop as well?
Right, in the workshop. It'd just be a workshop between the public and us, and, you know, they'd get to voice their concerns, and we, in turn, could voice our concerns.
And if it is a workshop, Jade, could we do?
I know your question. I think we're usually on the same page on these issues. If you're going to go ahead and do a workshop, just call a special call meeting, so you can make motions, move through these things. That's my recommendation. Robert, you've been around here a long time, and I'm going to yield to your opinion on it, but you want the ability to make motions, take action items up on this. I'm sure you'll want probably at least a letter expressing our viewpoint on this issue. You may want to consider a special call meeting, and then, of course, that will be a 10-day notice.
Commissioner Mead?
I recommend that it be a special call meeting, because it gives us more flexibility on what to do. And even though just as an irregular meeting, we're not required to let the public speak, but we always do. And in this meeting, we would clearly be letting people know that we're looking for public input. But it allows us to go ahead and do things with that input once it's received.
And that's why I didn't do a workshop. Usually workshops don't have comments from the public, which is usually us working within ourselves in discussion.
Chairman Wondell, my closest.
Yeah, I mean, so we could do it on the 3rd. That'd give us plenty.
Yes. We'll need a motion to instruct the county clerk to call a special call meeting. He has that ability under statute tonight.
And that's a Thursday, January 3rd.
And I'm willing to change my motion to a special call meeting if you are, Mr. Mead. Okay.
Any other discussion on that? Commissioner McCamey. And then I'll come to you, Commissioner Vallee.
The only problem with a special call is you're going to have to have a majority of the Commissioners before we can have a meeting. I'm not so sure, January 3rd, with this still being part of the holidays and all, that you'll have nine people show up for it. If we have a workshop, it don't matter if there's three show up, we still get to talk, and the public gets to talk.
Right.
So, I still would prefer a workshop as opposed, and then we can take any action we need to take at our January Commission meeting.
What is your deadline, though?
I'm not certain.
Do you happen to know, Amy?
They said they extended it to January the 9th.
That's what I thought.
But I think David said, you know, tonight is something, but that one time he made it.
Yeah, he didn't put a time limit on County Commission, anything County Commission does. This is for public, the public input. But he said government, there's no deadline, and we've got plenty of time.
Yeah, he did make that comment, and he also promised me the same thing, because I was worried, when I picked that date, when I was looking at the calendars, I was concerned about the comment period. And, you know, so we're comfortable with.
And I did mention the meeting to him out in the hall during our break, and he said they would make every attempt to be here. He said they would come and make sure someone will be here to answer questions if Commission has any questions.
Well, Commissioner Denenberg just texted me. She said the second week, but I don't know if we should take her vote since she's not here. I'm just kidding. What's the pleasure, go ahead.
I'm just telling Chuck, he's showing absent on the screen. I don't know if that was on purpose or not.
So, what's the pleasure of the Commission? Which, I mean, obviously, it makes sense for us to take some sort of action, but... What's the call? You got a motion?
What's the motion? We've got a motion on the floor, right?
Yes, sir.
Originally, it was a public hearing, and then he amended it to a special call meeting, because we're standing right now. On January 3rd, 6:00.
Well, if we put, I think Commissioner McCamey might have a point. The 3rd is probably still, a lot of people may be off, and, you know, New Year's is that Tuesday, or what have you. So, if we went to the second week, which is January 7th is the Monday, and then the 8th is Tuesday, 9th Wednesday, 10th is Thursday.
Then that's budget meeting, correct?
That is budget.
Budget and finance, or no, that's on Monday.
What happens on Monday, 7th?
I don't think we have anything far as Commission. I mean, is that a good day? Would that be okay?
Monday of the week, is that?
It's a Monday.
Monday. We don't have operations on that?
No, it'd be the next, it'd be the 14th.
Okay, it sounds good.
So, would you like to have a public hearing on January 7th?
January the 7th, workshop.
Workshop. Whatever you want to call it.
It's got to be a workshop.
Workshop.
In a workshop, you're still allowed to have the public speak.
Yeah. But we don't make any motions.
But we can take notes and gather the information.
And do the motions then at regular County Commission. Okay.
Just like the mayor did for the seniors one time. All right, Commissioner Mead, I apologize for.
Regardless of what date we pick, I recommend we poll the audience here, the Commission, to see who for sure can attend that. I mean, you know, sure, I mean, sometimes things happen you don't expect, but you don't have vacations planned or something for the first week in January. I mean, so have we decided the 7th is the date?
January the 7th, 6:00.
I would request that anybody that is relatively sure, they can be there on the 7th.
Aye.
How many do we have?
Chuck's not committing.
It looks like that's a good date.
We'll let Chuck text in. I got you, Chuck. All right, any other discussion? So, we have a motion on the floor for a workshop on January 7th at 6:00 regarding DOE landfill, proposed landfill.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir, Commissioner White, sir.
What's the purpose? What part are we hoping to decide?
And I'll let Commissioner Creasy answer, but in my opinion, is it gives the opportunity for the public to come. There's a lot of folks tonight that came to get a chance to speak, and give them a better chance to explain to us what their experience is, and for us to kind of talk amongst ourselves as well without having any issues.
We've been rushed in the last two or three weeks, and it hasn't really gotten out to the community in your districts, in my opinion, as well as it should. And I think this will give our constituents that opportunity to let us know how they feel about it, and we try to come up with some sort of resolution that would give the support that we want as a group.
As long as we got first.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. And I just wanted to reach out to the press, whether you're here or you're watching, to please stress to the public that we would like their input. Please.
Very good.
Good comment, Commissioner Scott. Okay, any other discussion?
The time of this meeting?
January 7th, 6:00 p.m., here at this room, 312 Anderson County Courthouse. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you and your family, and your departments. Okay. Law Director, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have no action items. Let somebody get the questions. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, Jay. Glad to see you here, sir. Commissioner White has something.
Yes, sir. Glad to have you here.
Jay, we, on our resolutions that we've passed, regulations on the barn issue, down on Mahoney Road.
Yes, sir.
I've been down in that community for a day or two, talking to different people about the possibility of serving on that committee that we're going to form.
Great. I just had a discussion with Mr. Giles about that.
Okay. The questions that have been asked today, the noise meters, is that going, are they in the hands of people here in the courthouse? And the ones on the committee that's going to be using the noise meters, are they going to have to have special training?
No, the committee's not going to be using those meters. That'll be strictly codes enforcement at a sheriff's office. We're not going to issue them to private citizens. They'll address the concerns, and since they'll be a liaison to codes enforcement. When the people have issues, they're not certain about them, minor issues, instead of getting codes enforcement department involved and trying to mediate small disputes, they'll take them to the community group, they'll try to work it out. They have an issue that looks like it's a codes violation or a violation of the community's safeguards, they'll refer it to the codes enforcement officers.
Okay, so every meeting that they have, every event, there'll be someone there with a noise meter?
Well, they, most of those people, the neighbors, have downloaded that app. It's relatively accurate, but we can't make a case off of it. What I would recommend to them is to call the appropriate authorities at that point, whether it be the sheriff's department. Most of them happen at night, so it's going to be the sheriff's office or codes enforcement at that time. And let them take a sample of the noise. That way, if there is an infraction, we can prosecute off that. The noise meter has to be a calibrated, certified, A-weighted scale device.
But it has to be on-site.
That's exactly right. That's why we're going to have to bring it down there. Otherwise...
Are they in your office or the sheriff's department? Where are they at right this second?
I couldn't tell you. The mayor has said last month, or like two weeks ago, that she was working on getting for codes enforcement. I know Lieutenant Sharp is working on getting to the sheriff's department. Where they're at in that purchase process, I couldn't tell you. But I do know that I've spoken with both departments, sent them emails, talked to them about recommendations on instruments. The mayor had a great idea, the person that she engaged on the sawmill was going to do training for her department, and then actually recommend a device. Along with that actual sound meter, you've got to have a calibrator, and it's almost as expensive as the actual sound meter. So, I like the mayor's idea of getting some training there, and I'd say Sheriff Barker will be interested in training his people, too. We want to, if we do, are forced to make a case there on the noise violation, we want a solid case. We want to follow our resolution, we want to follow it with appropriate protocol, and also the appropriate instrument. We want to have trained people operating that instrument. So, I'm all in favor of what the mayor proposed two weeks ago, and we'll see if we can get that rolling. But I've told both departments that what we talked about back in November, if they needed additional appropriations, the County Commission stands behind them on that issue, but nobody's come forward with that. We're hoping that they can pick up this less than a thousand-dollar instrument within their budget.
Okay, can I bypass you?
Yes, sir.
Where is the noise reg, noise meters right now?
I will ask Danny first thing in the morning. I know that I did authorize him. He had the funds within his own code, so that we did not need to come back for appropriations. I know that he has already arranged with a local company that is also, this is all working with that firm that we hired back to do the sawmill noise regulations. They're going to train just for free. And then also, Danny has done the full research on the legal requirements. So, to be, and not, I'm not a lawyer and haven't stayed in a Holiday Inn Express, but...
I bet you have.
It's been years, Mount Juliet, actually. But you actually have to, this is kind of like weights and measurements. So, if you have a scale in your business, and the state comes in and weighs and measures once a year, and you get your certification, you actually have to certify your sound meter and your calibrator yearly as well. So, there is a yearly fee to do that, so that if there's ever a violation and this goes to court, then the opposing attorney cannot say, is it been cali, is it certified? You know, have you been trained? And all of those things, that's why that, when we had that critical issue with the sawmill, that is why we did engage a professional that could go testify in court.
Okay. So, the people on Mahoney Road that are watching tonight, the meters have been ordered, and they are somewhere?
I'll find out the status of the order, but I do know it's all been authorized, and he has arranged for the training, and then also has, I guess, lauded for that certification that will be required to do every year. I don't know, and in fact, I saw the sheriff at the Oliver Springs Parade, and we've been playing tag on meeting. I know that he is working on this as well, and is very aware of it. You know, we'll have the equipment in our office, but as Jay said, most of these, the issues are at night with the receptions and the bands. And so, we'll be happy to put ours on loan, or the sheriff may have already, I would say he's already come up with a plan, and I just haven't been able to communicate with him to see what he's doing.
When you communicate with him and find out, would you share that with him?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Chairman, what we're talking about is the barn on Mahoney Road.
Yes, sir.
The noise issue. We have, the noise meters have been, hopefully, they're going to be found, hopefully, they're somewhere coming this way, and people will be trained with them, and we'll be able to address this situation in a professional manner.
Yes, sir. Good questions. Thank you, Commissioner Creasy, or Commissioner White. I get Jerry and Jerry mixed up all the time.
If you were to talk to the sheriff, I'd maybe join in on the training, and I'm sure he'd appreciate that, and get them trained up or train their trainer. Anything else I can do for you, any questions you may have?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Jerry. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas to you, Jay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, I think we've covered a lot of it, is the EMS report. Is there any questions for the EMS report? Most of it, again, was covered during the budget. It's in your packet if you have any questions or any comments. Before I go to the operations, Annette, could you come up this way, please?
Oh, she's gone.
Well, okay. Annette, while you're walking up here, just want to say thank you on behalf of full Commission. Come on up this way, come on up. We want everybody to see you. We just want to thank you. You do a lot for us. A lot of times, you don't get the recognition we just ask and need, and you deliver on most all occasions. So, on behalf of all the Commissioners, we want to thank you and wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. Thank you, thank you all. Annette takes care of us, and we appreciate it. And that's our chief deputy, or executive assistant, or secretary, or whatever title makes HR happy. Yeah, but she takes care of us. Okay, let's go on to, what's that?
The chief clerk.
Yeah, chief clerk, there you go, that sounded good. All right, next item is the operations agenda. We really didn't have a whole lot of items we have to take action on, but I do want to read through some stuff, and the mayor may want to jump in, and Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Wondell may have some things, but I'm just going to kind of read through this. We had an operations committee met on November 8th. We, all members were present. Let's see, we had a motion by Commissioner Creasy to send Tuppertown property to the purchasing department as surplus. That motion was seconded by Commissioner Jamison. Motion passed unanimously. I don't think we need to take action on that, or do we, Mr. Parliamentarian, on that one? I mean, it was already done?
Right.
Okay.
It's just a recommendation for the full Commission.
It doesn't say that. But I'd say we should go ahead and let's vote on that. Yeah, so the motion was made by Commissioner Creasy to send Tuppertown property to purchase the department as surplus, seconded by Commissioner Jamison, motion passed unanimously. We got a motion by Commissioner Mead. Do we have a second? Commissioner McCamey seconded. Any questions or comments on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Chairman Isabel discussed the visioning session, new business. Commissioner Wondell made a motion to put the City of Norris sidewalk grant item on the operations agenda for 2019. Motion was seconded by Commissioner Creasy and passed unanimously. That was brought to our attention by Commissioner Anderson. Should we make that a, so do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? I will say the mayor's in talks with the City of Norris on some other things, and maybe that might work out or something. So, all in favor, say aye. So, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next was a motion by Commissioner Wondell to add to next month's agenda the request for one secured entrance to the courthouse. Motion seconded by Commissioner Jaeger, motion passed. Do we have a motion to accept that as presented? Commissioner Scott?
Operations?
Yeah, it's just going to be put back on the agenda again. Well, this makes it official. Commissioner Scott with a motion, anybody seconding it? Commissioner McCamey, he's seconding and has a question? I know you don't, I just been saying that. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Skip any there? Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Wondell to defer the request for the opportunity to discuss judicial commissioners to next month's operating meeting, and it was seconded by Commissioner Mead, motion passed. Can we get another motion to do that, to add to the agenda for judicial commissioners as requested by Judge Leighton?
Put it on the operations?
That's what it is. Well, we've done the other ones that way. Don't want to shortchange Judge Leighton, trust me. We got a motion by Commissioner McCamey, got a second by Commissioner Smallridge. Any further discussion on that motion to add it to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. I know, we're just being extra careful tonight. Motion made by Commissioner Wondell to allow the mayor, yeah, this is important. Motion was made by Commissioner Wondell to allow the mayor to proceed with items discussed and evaluate requests regarding the DARC building roof, need for additional storage for the courts, the addition of witness slash conference rooms in the courthouse, and report back to operations committee in January. Motion was seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Mayor had some discussion items about Union County, Campbell County, and Anderson County working on some things together. That went good, and we look forward to that. That ends the report. Okay, any questions on operations? Next is resolutions for meeting dates. Resolution 18-12725, establishing meeting dates and times for the Anderson County Board of Commission. We have those dates in front of you, it's on page 131. We have two dates, January's date is the 22nd, which is going to be on a Tuesday, and then February is on the 19th, which will be a Tuesday. The rest will all be on Mondays. Is there any comments? We have a motion by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any comments on the dates as presented in this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, this is not set in stone. I mean, I know we, it's requirement by law that we do this, but we can change that at any time.
Good comment.
Any meeting?
Okay.
With 10 days notice.
And these are all night meetings, no day meetings at this time, but to your point, it could change. Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is a resolution honoring Steve Borf, requested by Sheriff Russell Barker. Is anybody here to read?
He passed on that.
Okay, okay.
I think Steve was the 31.
Okay, okay, any old business? Any new business? Merry Christmas to everyone. Does anybody have any comments you'd like to say?
Good meeting.
Ho, 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 good meeting, all right, all right.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone.